Emily, I sent the link to you, so just let me know when you've got it going on the website and we will kick things off.
We're all set.
Great, thank you. All right, just for the ease of kind of keeping up with the live stream and everything, if people other than the committee aren't speaking, if they could keep their screen off, that'd be great. I will officially call us to order at 6:02 PM. And I will officially call to order and enter us into the budget public hearing of fiscal year 22 at 6:02 PM. This evening, we will hear Dr. Bucky's presentation. He has a number of slides that he will go through, walking all of us through the process of the budget. And then after that, we will open the floor to constructive public feedback, knowing that this is a hearing, not a forum, and we will not be debating the budget this evening. School committee will keep track and try to address some of the concerns and questions that we're able to, and the superintendent will, so that we're able to address them afterwards. And others, you know, we may just take away and think about before we vote the budget. And then if school committee has additional thoughts, we will kind of weigh in after, after the public weighs in. Dr. Bucky, take it away.
Great, thank you very much. Can everybody see my screen? Awesome. This has been a long time in coming, and I'm actually very excited to do the public budget hearing tonight because this has been a very collaborative process. It has included the leadership team. And, you know, I've used the word iterative a lot, but this is shared leadership. And although I am making the presentation tonight, it represents hours of collaboration, communication, transparency, trust in getting to priorities and reprioritizing them. And so things are continuously evolving. We go through multiple reviews. You'll see this evening that what we discussed on Tuesday is not where we are today. We said in two public meetings on Tuesday that there was a gap. And I'm proud to report tonight, there is no longer a gap. So that's that multiple reviews, that's that continuously evolving process. We adjust for new information. I received a retirement letter today. Dr. Oxford receives information for students tuitioning in or tuitioning out or moving in or moving out of the district. So again, leadership team, budget subcommittee, joint budget FinCom, school committee, budget committee, very transparent. I think that Jackie Belfecker said it very clearly at our meeting Tuesday. The public has had more access to this, I need to pull up my mask, I'll have the people watching, via Zoom, an access to information than any time in the past. And I think that's a good thing because the more feedback that we get on the budget, the better and stronger it will be and our schools will be. And so original proposed to final approval is what you'll see tonight. Budget calendar, really, this work began in earnest in November. Michelle and I met with building principals and engaged conversation initially about enrollment because that's one of our biggest drivers. So talking to them about what did you anticipate your enrollment was going to be this, this year? What are your numbers actually this year? And what are you planning for, for next year? We then ask about staffing to align with that enrollment. Do they know of any retirements that are pending? Anyone that has indicated that they will be resigning? Something that we don't talk about a lot in public. Will there be teachers moving on for other reasons? Those all impact the budget. And so Michelle and I had that opportunity to ask each principal, each director, what do you need for your school, for your program, for it to operate at a high level? And so the budget was built around those requests and those conversations. So I can turn my camera on. I'm not sure I can do that easily, but here we go, there we go. Sorry about that, folks. How about now, everything back in order? So you have January have several meetings, February, several meetings, March, it really picked up in the opportunity for us to meet and review and revise. And then you get to tonight, which is the public budget hearing. There's a question for next week if we want to schedule an additional meeting or special meeting in order to vote the budget before then the scheduled meeting with finance committee, which is on April 12. So we set some budget priorities and I just want to walk the committee through those priorities, giving dollar amounts to them. So to meet our contractual obligations is kind of a no brainer. That is a major priority in our budget. I'm proud of what we negotiated with MEA, which is a 1% raise on day 92. And that represents their cost of living increases, the steps and lanes. So that budget priority is 862,549. Looking back, the FY '21 meet contractual obligations was 1.4 million. You see the small graphic in the corner, that's the superintendent thinking, looks like I have nearly $600,000 for priorities since the roll forward. Now, it's not that simple. I get it, but keep that number in the back of your head because it's going to play out in a couple slides. Other goals we had, technology to address the infrastructure, hardware upgrades and integration. The capital leases will be 212,706. And it's very important to note that that's year one of three. So that 212 will be a recurring expense. We wanted to explore reinstating a technology integration specialist. In one iteration, we were looking for two. In this budget, we are proposing one. Another goal and priority was curriculum that we wanted to adopt a new pre-K to mathematics program. The budget figure for that is $100,000. Again, year one of three. We wanted to explore adding curriculum coaches or specialists in an original budget proposal. That was two. What you will hear tonight from me is that is rolling forward as one. Other FY '22 goals and priorities, central administration for the human resources. We're budgeting $80,000 for that. We do have an offset of $50,000 for the current HR assistant position. But collaboration discussions with town for HR and potentially technology are ongoing. But those are the figures being rolled forward in tonight's proposed FY '22 budget. Facilities maintenance was a priority that I shared with you. The facilities audit is still be, is to be determined. It is finished in my meeting with Todd this week. They have submitted, I think, a draft to him just to make sure that they have things accurate. But in this budget, you will see we're budgeting $37,000 for maintenance needs, supplies, materials, repairs, replacements, safety contracts that we have. And then a more accurate projection for utilities costs. And that's 77,000, which you will see aligned with the opening of the Brown school. New school, that was one of our budget priorities, utilities, transportation. And again, we've delineated those costs that you'll see in the budget for those priorities. Also part of the budget that I just don't want to lose sight of, that the town supports us in funding, were the capital requests for this year. And I know that the facility subcommittee shared these and you are aware of them. But it's important, I think, for viewers at home to know that we have $224,000 worth of approved capital things in the budget. Where else does the school district get money? There are grants, we have the Metco grant. I'm not going to read slides to you, but just to give you a flavor that it isn't just the operating budget that we're talking about. It is the operating budget that we're talking about tonight, but there are many layers and pieces to how things are funded in the system. We have several revolving funds. You know that we collect user fees. The high school has a tuition revolving account for students who attend Marblehead High School as exchange students. The guidance department has a revolving account and the special education for tuition has a revolving account. A major driver of the budget is enrollment. And so this is a slide that I shared with the budget subcommittee and one that Nezdek provides for us. Numbers are always a moving target when it comes to enrollment. So they predicted pre-pandemic, mind you, for us that our enrollment this year would be 2665. We're at 2691, give or take. I think there's a slide coming up that has a slightly different number. But this particular presentation has been about a month in the making, so enrollment numbers change. What is interesting is the move forward to a forward look the next 10 years. And so they're looking at an almost 600 student drop by 2030. Now, a lot of things impact enrollment. You know, you could have a new company move to town or they could, there could be a new business or something that drives the economy here and people wanting to move to Marblehead. And so our enrollment might change. But based on the work that Nezdek does for enrollment projections, they're looking at us on a downward trend to a projected low of 2,008 students in 2030. Budget, because it's so important, I give you another look. This gives us the current enrollment and then what we have budgeted for, for next year. I do think it's of note that we have 258 currently enrolled seniors. And we're planning for 168 incoming kindergarteners. And again, kindergarten is a best guesstimate, but that shows you that trend in enrollment that that prior slide bore out. And then if you do the diagonal, you can see where we are anticipating increases. I think we had a number of fourth graders go out this year. So you see that 199 to 226, that's a big jump, but we anticipate a number of those returning. Last slide on enrollment, I promise. This just gives you a more in the weeds, disaggregated look at where the sections will be at the Glover School and Brown particularly K to three. And then Village for four. I didn't include five and six because they do teaming and it tends to get confusing if somebody sees, well, they have 200 students in fifth grade, but only five sections. It's because of teams. I did highlight two sections in the Brown school where we're looking at reducing a teacher as a result of enrollment in those two grades. Another major driver of the budget is special education and our out of district placement costs. I have included what was budgeted this year, what the request is next year, and then the change. And that will also show up on the running budget document. Maintenance, another more predictable in Marblehead than most communities, but maintenance costs can be unpredictable. I had a facilities manager in a former district that knew if you changed the temperature in the pool by five degrees, what that would result in monthly utility savings. We're not there, but we are trying to get a better trend analysis of what we spend in utilities because this is a driver of our budget. And being able to look back over five year, particularly with the Brown school coming online and hopefully having better conservation and more green use of energy, we can get a better sense of our utilities costs across the district. Maybe my favorite slide because it gives you a sense of where we have been. And I'm just flipping my notes because I took a little speaker's notes to make sure. So the green box is the FY '20 final budget, what was approved. Before the world went sideways last February, this is what the leadership team proposed to you as the budget with a delta of 1.8 million dollars. Remember way back in the beginning, I put on that slide that the roll forward salaries was 1.4 million. Looking at that, that's a pretty conservative ask beyond contractual obligations, considering that you would have utilities and transportation and other costs. Pandemic hits. The final budget that was agreed to was 40 million, which is a difference of almost a million dollars. Again, keeping in mind, your salary roll forward was 1.4. So the difference between the FY '20 final to the FY '21 final is 896. This year, our budget's 40,000. We proposed in February, 42.6. The difference from the FY '21 final to what we proposed is a big jump, 2.1 million of identified need. FY '22 current proposed budget that you'll see tonight is 41.8. That's a difference of 800,000 between what we proposed initially to what we're proposing tonight. And so that difference is 1.3 million dollars. Another way to look at that in a more narrow scope is salaries and expenses. FY '21 to FY '22, you see that 1.3 million dollar difference again, year, year over year. This slide takes you through, how did we get to that 41? And the operating, you see the contractual increases of 862. Michelle has talked regularly about that Student Opportunity Act. Special education tuition funding, we decreased that today to meet some other priorities, which I'll talk about in a minute. IT general expenses, the facilities that you saw on that slide, curriculum, central admin, student services, you can see all of those. And then the increase of the 77,000 for the Brown school. Some operating cost decreases, the one-time funding of capital items, closure of the Evelyn Coffin Village, Village general operating costs. You see the staffing decreases. I will point out that the Brown reducing two classroom teachers, that has been one. It is now two. Other staffing reductions and savings due to known retirements is 91.804. But as I said today, I just got a notification of a retirement today, so that is always moving. We have presented to you our tiered priorities. We are able to fund all of the green tiered priorities. We're able to do that by increasing that preschool revenue from a 40,000 figure that you saw the other night to what is now a $53,000 figure. The capital leases, which will be covered with stimulus funding. The integration specialist in technology and curriculum. The new math program, which will be funded through Esser Funds. And then the guidance counselor and the Unified Arts at Village. Those additions take us to 41.721. We're able to fund the Human Resources Director, the Veterans Reading Teacher. Not funding the custodian, but I'm pleased to report tonight that we will be able to change the Bright Tutor to a Bright Teacher. And that brings us to that 41.839 budget figure for this evening. None of the priorities in pink or tier three priorities are funded at this time. This is just the tracking sheet to show you when we started in February, what happened in March, and most recently, what happened as of today on 4-1. That gives you the target and the request of a budget of 41,839,543. I did just, I had a great meeting with Town Administrator Jason Silva today. I think that they said at our last budget subcommittee meeting that Jason and I needed to lock ourselves in a room until we came to zero. I'm very happy to report that we came to zero today. And I do want to thank him and the town and FinCom for their support and getting us to zero and for being collaborative in this process. And Jason just shared this with me. And I think it is helpful that in budgeting, sometimes it's either or, it's a binary choice. We're going to fund it or we're not. But there are a lot of layers to what goes into funding. And the idea that Marblehead isn't supportive, I would say is incorrect. And I thought that Jason, sharing these slides with me in comparing 26 different communities and communities to whom we compare ourselves. So the Waylands, the Westons, the Lexington's, our neighbors, Newburyport, Manchester Essex. So in terms of the per pupil expenditure, we have had the biggest increase 2015 to 2019. Now, we all know what 20 and 21 have been like. But I think it is helpful to see that it is a bigger picture when it comes to school funding and finance. And we have benefited from our per pupil expenditure increasing. And that concludes me talking for 24 minutes. I'm happy to take questions from the committee.
Great. I think if you want to just stop sharing your screen.
Yep. I will say, because the budget is a shared leadership endeavor, that I have asked each member of the leadership team to be available tonight in case there is a program or building specific question that they would be able to answer it.
Great, thank you, John. I will open up the questions and comments now after we've seen Dr. Bucky's presentation. If any members of the community would like to weigh in and give us their thoughts, I will ask that they raise their hands and I will call on them. And then I ask that you state your full name and address for the record as well.
I apologize, I'm so used to it being the committee with questions for the public budget hearing, the community.
We will, we will circle back to the committee as well. Kazzy Kendall, I have your name up first.
Hello, it's Kazzy Kendall, 163 Jersey Street. First to admit that high finance is not my strong point and that I really need to pay attention to numbers because of my dyslexia to really get a understanding of what I'm being told and what I'm, what I'm seeing for myself. It's difficult for me to reconcile that this is a needs-based budget and that no cuts to either staff or services have been made while also hearing that we are heavily relying on one-time funding for things like curriculum and other necessaries. It's also, as much as you say, no cuts have been made. I also saw that we are losing a secretary, a nurse, allied arts teachers, classroom teachers, a principal. So to me, the fact that we have members of our school community who have jobs today, but who will not have jobs next school year, that seems like a cut to me. I'm also a little bit worried about how heavily we rely on PTO funding, which is willingly given, but we rely on that funding for real things that aren't necessary, not enrichments or nice-to-haves, but real things that our schools need to perform. You know, we hear poor Mandy Murphy, year after year, wants that extra guidance counselor. And going into school year 22, knowing what these kids and the staff have been through, opening a preschool that has the potential to have medically fragile children in it. I'd really like just to hear a little bit more about why we're not funding the guidance counselor and why we're cutting a nurse. Thank you.
I guess I could address that directly. The guidance counselor is funded and there will be a nurse at the Brown school.
Thank you.
But it's said on the thing that you're eliminating a nurse.
That's because we are consolidating three schools into one.
But the end result is nurse who's currently employed will not have a job next year, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's been a known, that's been a known piece for, since the Brown school was, was determined.
That feels like a cut. I don't know how else I would describe that.
It's a, it's a natural thing that happens when schools are consolidated. And it's unfortunate 100%, but it's the, the other option is to keep staff that are redundancy.
And I think, I think it's also just worth commenting that there's also, when you see in those reductions, Kazzy, that, so the reduction of a principal, the school is only going to have one principal, Glover only has one principal. So in this situation, we actually have a principal who will be retiring at the end of the year. So it is not necessarily a cut, but if that had been the situation, yes, there would have been a reduction in staff because we do not need to have two principals at the school versus Glover that has one principal. So some of these things, as Sarah mentioned, is just sort of a natural progression of the consolidation of the schools coming together.
Okay, and the heavy reliance on the PTO funding and, and the one-time funding? I didn't even know we could use Essa Grant for things like curriculum. But then again, I'm not, I'm not, as I said, I'm not honed in to the finer points.
I mean, I'll jump in there, Sarah or Megan? I mean, I'll jump in there, Sarah or Megan, if you want to jump in, but I think. Kazi, so I think as we go through this, what you'll see over the next couple of years with both the town side of government and the school side. Particularly with one-time funding. That's exactly what we'll be looking to do is. Use one-time funding for events that can be paid for, so rather than. Funding salaries with grants that will eventually run out, in this case. If it's technology or. One-time funding for. Math curriculum. Then that money can be used for that one-time event and it doesn't carry forward in future budgets, so. That's the best way to use grant money. Is so that you don't get tied up with having expenses in future years when the grant money is no longer available.
Okay, I'm hoping other people have questions too, as I say, this is not my strong point. I do struggle to keep up because of the dyslexia. And it's much, it's easier for me to understand when I'm hearing the words than actually seeing the numbers.
Thank you, Kazi. Colleen Nile?
If I can just make one clarification. We have our students spread over three schools, but we currently. From that merge of the Coffin and Bell community employ two nurses. Because we didn't hire another nurse to cover. At Village, so we're covering with the two nurses, so we'll go from two to one, not three to one. And so we'll have one nurse for four hundred and fifty students.
Correct, similar to what Glover has. Colleen?
Hi, like Kazi.
Can you please state your full name and address for the record?
Sure, Colleen Renee Nile, three Boden Street. Like Kazi, I am not a budget person, I'm actually a writer. And in writing, often what's not included or what's omitted is as important as what is included and not omitted. So I do have some questions, you can decide if you're able to answer them, that's great. If not, I would just ask that you consider them before you complete this section. Some of my questions. Where do these twelve budget priorities fit into our long-range or strategic plan? For example, the groundskeeper position, which is listed as a tier three, so it's not funded. Without that position, where do we see our new or existing landscaping fields, courts? In one year, five years, ten years? Where in this budget document, and again, thank you for posting this, this is all new right before the meeting, so. Where in this budget document do you see our current or future values as a district reflected? How does this specific iteration of the budget put us where we want to be in one, five, or ten years? Specifically, how does funding planned curriculum upgrades to mathematics? With Esser relief funds fit our district values or set us up for future growth and excellence? Finally, how does budget planning from a pretty good place to just keep the lights on advance our program? How, as a district, do we strive for excellence or greatness? When I'm hearing over and over that our budget goal is set level funding, status quo, we have to keep the town happy. I'm very glad to see that you're at a zero. That is great news, but I have to ask, what does that zero mean moving forward? One, five, or ten years? What does that zero today look like in one, five, or ten years? Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Catherine Martin?
Oh, sorry about that, I didn't know I was next, Catherine Martin, twenty-nine West Shore Drive. First off, kind of curious about how come this wasn't posted forty-eight hours in advance per Massachusetts laws for. School committee budget hearings, I did send that to Sarah and John today. Honestly, I don't want to be the one who's always picking at this thread, but at some point you guys have got to get your procedural house in order. We all want to have.
Do you like to weigh in?
You know what, you don't have to weigh in, Sarah, my questions are about the budget tonight. So. Yep, fifty more for a million dollar school, we just built the Brown school, I've sat on the building committee for five years now. We built a vice principal's office, will we be funding a vice principal position?
No, we will not.
Okay, we also built a large special education wing that, or area. Probably, I guess it was four or five classrooms at roughly a thousand square foot of classroom. At roughly four to five hundred dollars a square foot, so that we could provide redundant special education to Glover. How many special education teachers are we adding to the Brown school next year?
I believe this has been asked and answered several times, but I will.
So how many? I don't want a big explanation, I want to know how many special education teachers we're adding to the Brown school next year.
I'd like to ask that you be a little respectful of the superintendent.
You are not to be talking over the superintendent, please.
Please.
Okay, my apologies.
Please.
I'll ask Dr. Oxford to weigh in on the redundant services.
Good evening, sure.
Hi Eric, thank you.
Sure, no problem. So to be as succinct as I can be, because I know I cannot.
I know.
Thank you. Technically, just the two, right, the two pre-K fall under the special education umbrella, we have had a ton. Of work and collaboration internally within our department to ensure that equity and parity across both K to three buildings. So we'll leave it at that, I guess, for now, high level, but.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
And so are we able to fund the STEM program for the multipurpose room?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, and that was added to this. Budget.
I do, it's asked and answered, yes.
Okay, okay. And then my last question would be for the math curriculum, I just heard David say that we're going to be trying to use grant money for one-time needs. But my understanding was that that is funded over three years. So what is, how are we anticipating funding it over the next three years? And same question for the two hundred and twelve thousand dollar technology ask.
I think we've made it clear that, you know, that this, that. Over the course of the coming year, that we're developing a strategic plan and will. Almost definitely be going in for an override, and so that will feed into all of those types of things.
So we'll be going for an override next year?
I'm, Katie. We will most likely be going for an override, that's as much as you're going to paint me into a corner.
Okay, thank you.
Paul Baker?
Sorry, hi there everyone, thanks so much, Paul Baker, seventy-nine Overlook Road, Marblehead. I'm just gonna go straight for it, I'd just like to thank Dr. Bucky and his entire leadership team for coming to this. Place that you've got us to, I really appreciate all the work you've put in. Again, to. All of you guys on the school committee, you've done a fabulous job, you're all volunteers, thank you so much. Also to Ben Berman and everybody on the finance committee, you've all done fantastically again to get us where we are. The years of dysfunction are behind us, I think. And for people to come on here and berate you continuously. For trying to do your best as volunteers is beyond me, I just do not get it. You guys putting in order something that's been out of whack forever, just as Jason Silver is for the town. We have to bite this, suck it up, go another year without an override and things will get better. But this constant bickering and jabbing about this process is. It's just ridiculous, you've got to zero, these people should be happy for it and grateful for it, and I am, and thank you so much, that's it.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate that. Anne?
Anne Simcoe, seventy-seven Garfield Street. Basically, I mean, I don't really know much about budgets, I'm sixteen. I am a student at Marblehead High School. My one concern is about the arts program. I'm an artist. I have, I did art studio one last year, I'm doing painting and drawing too this year. And I noticed in the budget that you guys are getting rid of an allied arts teacher. And that last year you guys also got rid of the teacher for art studio three and four. And one of the things that I was most excited about as a high school student. Was how good the arts program was before you guys changed it around. By firing an art teacher last year for, I think it was because of the pandemic, at least that was the rumor I heard, I don't know. Feel free to correct me. I would be really happy if it wasn't, if it was for some other reason. But I feel like for a lot of. For in like positions of crisis, the arts program gets cut a lot. And I know that enrollment has gone down. But I was just hoping that even though you guys got to zero, and that's great. Maybe next you guys could try to put a little more emphasis on the arts. I would really appreciate it, and I know so many talented artists. And it just feels kind of painful to have the CAD teacher teaching us painting. Yeah, I would, it would be great. And I know my art teacher feels a little bit like she's falling apart at this, like. Just the whole program feels like it's falling apart at the seams. So I think that they would appreciate a little bit, a few more teachers, just a little bit more support from you all in the future. But congratulations on getting to zero, that's all.
Thank you, Anne, Dr. Bucky or Mr. Power, do you want to weigh in on that at all?
Sure, I'm sure I'll see Mr. Bauer's camera come on, but I know that they needed to make some decisions regarding enrollment. In art courses for the FY twenty-one budget. For the FY twenty-two budget, the allied arts reduction is because of the merger of schools into the Brown school. So you don't have a bigger advocate for the arts than your current superintendent. And so I would not support a budget that is eliminating arts. But if we have enrollment in courses that don't support it, and I think that Mr. Bauer can probably pick it up from there.
Yes, absolutely, that's the case, last year. Decrease in enrollment for our courses and trying to do the best that we could, we had. Without getting the details of the personnel. Moving on to new positions, so nobody was fired. With that, and certainly working with our lead teacher in the arts, who probably is your teacher, Ms. Haller White. And working on trying to work to stabilize as we have been. And being creative as we can to utilize the resources we have and looking to continue to actually build. Moving forward and we're going to have some reviews in terms of. Our requirements and things like that, that's more to be said later. But definitely an advocate here as well for the performing arts, because very proud of the work that has been done through that.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you both, and I can say as not an athlete in high school, but as a music person. That the arts are very, very important to me as well, Anne, so I'm in your corner on that. Thank you for speaking as well, Anne, and raising those concerns. Alistair Connor?
Alistair Connor, nine Clotman's Lane, Marblehead. I just wanted to ask about, I didn't really hear in these meetings, the plan. For addressing any of the kids that have fallen behind during this time, this last year and a half. And how we're ensuring that we don't get a spike in IEPs going forward for those kids that fell behind. And what the funding and plan was for recovery for that.
Dr. Bucky?
Yep, Nan Murphy and I had this conversation earlier today, so I see her smiling. She did report out at school committee that we are using the Student Opportunity Act money, which is actually in this budget. To do some testing and assessments for students who may have learning needs. And that's for regular education students, our special education students receive extended year services or supplemental services during the summer. So I'll just dish over to Nan to kind of give a refresher on what that will look like.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bucky. Yep, we have, Dr. Oxford and I have been talking and planning for some of that summer work to happen for students. And we have built that into the grant, and I know since our original conversation and presentation. Dr. Oxford is also partnering with the YMCA, and so we're looking at being able to bring some really great things together for our kiddos. We are also, it's a great question, and it's on every educator's mind, what we're going to do and how we are going to. Assess and remediate. The loss that every student across our Commonwealth and nation has experienced this year, it's just. You know, there's statistics and articles being written of how this is going to be something that school leaders struggle with for. Five to ten years. So we are having those internal conversations. I've met with a number of staff members from student support services. We're looking at how next year we are going to. Identify students and provide tiered interventions, how we're going to provide professional development to staff. Our math program, every math program we've looked at, that's the driving factor. What do you have, what do your interventions look like, what do your assessment components look like? What kind of resources do our, will our teachers have at their fingertips? What kinds of things do we have for parents in the home to use with students? So there, those conversations have been happening with the Office of Student Services since September. So we will continue to have those conversations and, you know, maybe later in the spring. We can all present some of our proposed ideas for how we're going to do exactly that. Thanks.
Thank you, Nan.
Thank you, Nan. Jenny Armini?
Hi there, thanks everyone for giving me this opportunity, I'm Jenny Armini, eight Russell Street. And I am wondering, do we have state approval to use recovery funding for the math curriculum? We don't want to face an unfunded expense and we don't want to run afoul. So is there a sense from the state that this is appropriate use of funding?
Absolutely, we reached out to the School Superintendent's Association, to the School Committee Association. I conferred with the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. The federal government has given a very wide. Latitude for how these funds are used and certainly wouldn't propose something to the school committee that had not been vetted.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jenny. Alexa Singer? Ms. Singer, are you there? All right. Not unmuting herself, but I will, oh, here you go, hi Alexa. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
Hi, sorry, my internet crashed. Hi, sorry about that, Alexa's twenty-two, sorry, my internet just started to crash right as I was coming on. So first of all, thank you for, you know, all of you doing the work that you're doing, start with that. And second of all, I just wanted to bring up some points in regards to, I heard mentioned, which I think is great, and for a long-term strategic plan. And, you know, I just, as someone who has been volunteering in the public school system, you know, since my daughter stepped foot as a kindergartner. And, you know, my oldest is now going into tenth grade. And have watched the public school systems and the funding for a long time. And I just wanted to ask that for, as you finish this budget and you're looking at that long-term plan, as you're looking at that strategic plan. I know this information has been provided to previous superintendents, you know, years ago. And it, you know, really never got any traction, and I'm hoping to see that it does get some traction as we move forward. But, you know, and I think there's a lot of people that have been involved in the PCOS and other volunteer organizations in town. That would be happy to provide that data to the school committee and to, you know, Dr. Bucky, if you really have a, you know, an accurate picture of where the funding is going. And I think that it's important to note that there are PTOs and PCOS and other volunteer organizations that are really. Funding critical infrastructure, you know, things such as, you know, smart boards and wifi and security doors. And, you know, fans, window blinds, furniture. Not really funding the enrichment opportunities that they would really like to be directing their money towards, but really towards that basic. Level of infrastructure, you know. but really towards that basic level of infrastructure, you know, Chromebooks for teachers, those types of things that I would like to see in the future being built into the budget for the schools. And also out of respect for the administration and the teachers that are working so hard that they are not having to come to volunteer organizations looking for, you know, basic critical supplies. That that, that that ends up, you know, getting looped into the budget and that that not only, you know, happens specifically for the schools that I volunteered at, but other, you know, schools as well. So as you move forward, looking at things, I hope that you take some of that into consideration and, you know, find a way to work that into a bigger strategic plan of where the schools are going. And also looking at other outside-the-box opportunities that don't cost the district money, but really open up opportunities for special education programs at the high school of enhancing the dual enrollment and building things into the budget where perhaps that money needs to be supplied upfront. But then the district could get reimbursement from the state. So at the end of the day, there is no money out of pocket for the district and that we're not leaving money on the table and we're opening up opportunities for our students in these new ways. So as you move forward and, you know, work through this year, but more importantly, uh, Dr. Bucky, as you, you know, work through the town of Marblehead and join that there is a lot of that historical information that has been happening for years. And as I stare down 10 years of volunteering for this town, I would love to see that we take that and move forward. So thank you again, and I hope you guys uh take that into your next year's plan.
Hi, can I address, can I address that one?
Sure, thank you.
Um, Alexa, thank you. I appreciate your, your comments. And I think you're absolutely right. As a district, we are incredibly lucky to have such supportive families, especially through the PTO. And I agree, probably historically, there's been um a reliance on those PTO funds for operating budget. And that's not the way it should work, right? Our operating budget should support our operations and the PTO money should a hundred percent be for enrichments and, and um programs specifically to the students. And that's the approach, you know, with Michelle coming on board that we've been taking. Um, the superintendent does meet on a regular basis with the PTO Central Council, and they have provided that um historical funding. So it does come into our overall financial plan. Um, so we are well aware of it. We are tracking it. We are working with the PTOs. And I completely agree, there should not be a reliance on our operations. And I, I don't think for this budget, that's the case, you know. Dr. Bucky, I'll let you speak to that, but.
No, I just, I, I know it is not part of this budget, but I think that I'd love to have Alexa come in and meet with me. Um, I appreciate her thoughtful comments and contributions to this. And as we're looking at launching strategic plan, not to steal my thunder for later in the evening, but I'm going to be talking about that. But having this historical perspective um from a variety of lenses is important. And so I'm extending an invitation here via Zoom for you to come in uh to Witcher Road and sit down and um maybe share your perspective on this, because I really appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I also think really for, you know, watching and being through so many school committees and so many different superintendents over the years and the time volunteering, it's really working with the administration and the staff. And those are the people who have their feet on the ground and those are the people that really, uh, we met the needs, but it really shouldn't have been coming from our organization. And they should not have been having to wait and see if those basic needs were going to be met. So, you know, I hope that we change, change that tactic and really start moving forward. So they're not placed in that uncomfortable position.
Agreed. Thank you.
Sarah, can I? Uh, sure.
So one of my concerns um with the PTO funding is we are actually, in my opinion, relying on them. You know, the S R money, um, it's COVID relief. We all know that. Whatever the acronym is, it's, it's COVID relief money. And things like tents, um, smart boards, all of that is crystal clear, no gray. You know, totally within the guidelines of um COVID money relief money. Because these are situations that wouldn't exist without COVID. They are 100% driven by COVID. Our math curriculum, we identified before COVID even hit that we needed a math curriculum this year. We know it's going to cost us three years. We are using COVID money to pay for a math curriculum that wasn't needed because of COVID. When if we were using our COVID money to pay for tents and stuff, we wouldn't be asking our PTOs to cover this. So although it's kind of a juggle, I do think we do have that continued reliance on the PTOs, which is concerning. When the money is, is there, we just need to hold it to pay for a math curriculum, which again, yes, curriculum is okay under this, but it's curriculum, my understanding is the spirit of it is it's curriculum needs created by learning gaps created by COVID. And in this math curriculum, there is no ambiguity. There's no gray. It, it is not driven by COVID. So I, you know, it is a concern.
Sorry, can I just clarify that though? Because we are using our COVID money for smart boards, for rolling desks, for PPE. We are a hundred percent using our grant money for the COVID needs that we have to get our school, to get our children into school more often. So that is what we are using our COVID money for as well. I just want to be clear on that.
Thanks, Megan.
A- a- and I'd like to clarify, you know, we have another, it hasn't been finalized, but our understanding is it's going to be close to $6 million. $6 million that's coming to the town of Marblehead to be used over the next three years. And we will get the proper guidance on um why we're getting that money and how that money can, can be spent. But uh I'm hopeful that three years from now, COVID will not be in existence. But there's a reason why the government is giving us $6 million. And I think we'll be able to use those monies for um issues related to technology or facilities or one-time expenses that will help um, you know, m- move the country forward. I think that was what uh President Biden's initiative was, was to try and get, get us to move forward. And so I think um it's money that's well spent and it will be used wisely by both the school district and the town.
We, we are currently at the high school, in my understanding, fundraising for smart boards. Like an email, my understanding from parents coming to me today was emails went out today asking that we fundraise for, by parents for smart, rolling smart boards. So my point is just, check every box. Like if we've covered every COVID expense and that before we fund the parents and then there's money left and this falls into it, well then, fine. But, but don't fill the other boxes before we, and ask the parents to pay for what falls underneath this. Um, and as far, and, and these are reoccurring expenses. They're for three years. Um, and I, I would like, you know, just because where we've been and, and I, and I know the integrity of Dr. Bucky and Michelle, um, and I would hate for them to be in a situation where, you know, we find out later on that actually the DOR wouldn't have signed off on this. Is it as easy as just making a phone call and saying from the state, not from other superintendents or one of these, like from a governing body, is this okay?
Uh, I, uh, go ahead, Dr. Bucky.
No, I, I mean, I would not risk my reputation or the district without feeling that this could move forward in checking with Michelle, in checking with the School Superintendent's Association. These are federal dollars. So um I know that there is literacy loss as a result of COVID. So other districts are buying school libraries or literacy curriculum or classroom level libraries. People are worried about social emotional, so they're buying health curricula to address that. There's clearly going to be numeracy challenges for younger learners. And so a robust math curriculum to replace, because we were talking about a math curriculum prior, I don't think negates us being able to use current stimulus dollars because the children will have math needs. They will have literacy needs. They will have social emotional needs. Um, I know of one that's building an outdoor rock garden as a place for children for regulation needs, coming back into more crowded buildings or being in school when they haven't been in school of creating an outdoor space. And so superintendents are understandably very cautious that you don't want to use uh these dollars for anything that, that wouldn't be supported. The challenge, I guess, i- if there is a challenge, is that the federal government hasn't listed a, you can spend for ABC, but you cannot spend for XYZ. And so absent those clear guidelines, and I think you've heard me say regularly this year, that the guidance then receives guidance that has revised guidance. Right now, they're saying that we can use these dollars and the people I'm consulting with say that that is a clear acceptable use of those dollars for what I'm putting forward this evening.
Thanks, John. Uh, Sandra Callahan?
Hey, guys. I, I'm going to apologize in advance if I, if my internet uh cuts up because I'm at work.
Um, but you just give us your address.
I'm sorry, 25 Nagasav, Sandra Callahan.
Thanks.
Um, a couple of things. Um, one is just in regards to the budget this year, a couple of concerns I have. One, nursing hours. I'm significantly concerned about that for several reasons. Um, I think one nurse at the Brown and Glover School for 400-plus students is not sufficient. Um, maybe, I can't even justify that even before COVID, but you guys need to take in consideration going forward. We will be having children in school full-time, three feet apart. The amount of responsibilities for these nurses now in regards to finding out contact tracing and quarantine, they haven't even, e- even, you know, tipped the scales in regards to how much involvement that's going to be. Um, that's a huge concern that I have by reducing the nursing hours. Number two is we have pool testing right now. I don't know if that's something that we're going to pursue going forward, but the more students we have in our school, the more pool testing we're going to have to do, which will also involve more nursing, um, nursing time. And lastly, these kids have had significant issues, mental health wise, across the board. When you see kids that are going back into the school, we're going to see increased anxiety, depression. They're going to present with very psychosomatic complaints is what the nurse will report as. You're going to see more headaches. You're going to see more abdominal pain. The nurse is going to be extremely busy. So that's my concern with nursing hours, that we're significantly reducing them. Uh, number two, guidance services. We, we didn't have enough guidance support before COVID. We surely don't have enough now. I can speak on that. I'm a pediatric nurse. I see patients in the office every single day. These kids are in a bad place right now. We need to be prepared going forward. Um, and then lastly, um, obviously I have significant concerns about loss of learning. You know, how are we going to be able to capture these kids that have uh lost, um, you know, lost skills this year, but also uh have the time to increase services for kids that are already have IEPs? Um, and then lastly, and I don't know if this is going to be for the budget this year or going forward. We in Marblehead know that our enrollment is down. Parents were not happy in Marblehead this year. A lot of kids left the district. I don't know if they're coming back. And have, are you guys prepared for that going forward of what our budgets are going to look like? So like I said, I don't know if next year, if I know budgets or we have to have numbers, I think in October. Like I said, I'm not a budget person. Um, the one thing that I do have to give you guys a huge kudos for, um, being a practitioner, I don't have the luxury of being able to go to a lot of these meetings. I hope you guys continue doing these meetings on Zoom because it's allowed me to be more involved in regards to what's happening in the school and in the town, that going forward that happens. But I, I do know that I think there is some federal money or state money based on what our numbers are in October. I don't know if they can take money back from us, but are we looking at, if our enrollment does not come back up, how we're going to deal with that decrease in our enrollments going forward as a result of COVID and what we were unable to bring or offer our students in Marblehead this past year? Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. John, do you want to?
She's referring to the October first SIMS submission, which uh they use for budgeting purposes and certainly Michelle and I and Eric for special education use uh those numbers for planning purposes and this budget reflects that.
And I think one thing that bears noting is that Bright Tutor to Teacher, um, Sandra, your point is well taken. I'm a licensed mental health counselor in the state of Massachusetts. And so that's obviously a piece that I'm well aware of and, and is near and dear to my heart and I advocate strongly for. Um, we've got a guidance counselor going in at the village school. Um, and we've got that Bright Tutor to Teacher, which is the program at the high school that uh supports students who are coming off of medical uh situations and hospitalizations, many of which end up being psych hospitalizations. Uh, so we're, we are looking to uh uh expand on, on the ability to support that.
Can I just add one piece to that too? Um, Sandra, thanks for your comments. I appreciate them. I think we all do. Um, just a few other, um, just to follow up on a few other things you said too. In terms of enrollment for next year, Dr. Bucky has surveyed um those students who um are not enrolled this year to get a feel for what that enrollment will look like in September um and making sure that we're budgeting for those. So that is um incorporated in the enrollment and budget numbers that Dr. Bucky presented today, um, tonight. And also, um, we, the contact tracing with the pool testing, that did come up today in our reopening meeting. And so I agree, you know, we need to make sure that our nurses are supported. And um, you know, our administrators are working with our, especially at the high school, because that's where we're seeing the, you know, the largest number of cases um to make sure that, that the nurses there are supported. So um, just wanted to let you know that we are working through that.
I think it bears noting too, I don't think this has been said in a public meeting at this point, but that uh the state is going to be, or the desk is going to be continuing to fund pool testing for the remainder of the school year. Uh, David, did you want to weigh in?
Well, I just want to, you know, it kind of dovetails on to what Nan talked about earlier that, you know, as our assistant superintendent, you know, she's working with others. And there's discussions taking place about how COVID will have impacted students over the next year, five and, you know, to five years, and that will continue to evolve. And I think that's something that clearly Nan and our staff are on top of. And um, to um, the earlier comments, we'll, we'll need to, I'm sure the district will be aware of that and will need to address those issues as they come up and as they're identified. So I'm glad to hear that we're on it, but it, it is a good point and we'll need to be aware of those things going forward.
Thanks, David. Um, so I've actually got one more hand up. Uh, Julie Duggan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
That's Julie Duggan, 18 Dodge Road. Um, I am a co-president of the PTO at the high school, and I just want to clarify that we are not fundraising for smart boards. We did fund some smart boards recently, um, but we did, we are not fundraising for any smart board. So I just want to make sure that misinformation is not out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had heard it the other way, but thank you for that clarification. Um, do you know how many sport, smart boards you funded and how recently?
We funded six of them, four of them um from the, well, all of them from the PTO, but two of them were from an anonymous donor. And we just, we just approved that at our last meeting.
Thanks, Julie. All right, I don't have any uh further hands up, so I will ask the committee if anybody has anything that they would like to weigh in on. Um, you know, this, we're not voting tonight, so this conversation will continue. Um, but I had said that I would let the, anybody on the committee sort of um make any comments that they wanted to make. So if anybody would like to say anything. David, you've got your uh mic on. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I'll start out by saying I, I think it's been um a really intensive process this year, unlike many years where um this year we, we've had some challenges related to COVID. But we also, you know, have Dr. Bucky coming in at his first year. But I, I want to thank um Nan and the administrators and Michelle Cresta, who's in her second year for just, you know, having a total team approach to the budget. Something that um Bill McCalliffe carried over from last year, and I think it served us well last year. And I'm glad to see that that process has continued to move forward. So thanks for everybody in the schools that have continued to work on that and come up with their priorities and communicate those things. And I also want to thank, you know, uh, you know, Jason Silva, the Finance Committee and the town for what we've done. You know, these budgets are, are town budgets. There's the school budget and there's the town budget. And we've worked through this. And we've worked through this process to come up with what the priorities are, to identify what funding we can use for what our needs are. And I think it's just been a really collaborative process. And even from tonight, as Dr. Bucky said, things will change. Things will change two weeks from now. There will be something different that might come up between now and town meeting, but I think we've all done, you know, really good work to get us to this point and to provide a budget that we can, that we can work with to help, you know, meet the needs of the school. So I just wanted to make that statement and thank everybody who's been involved.
Thanks, David. Anybody else before I say a few things? Megan?
Yeah, I have something. So yes, I am going to second David on that. I'd want to thank Dr. Bucky and his team and all the work that the leadership team has, has done over the past few months. I know you've put a lot of work into this, not that you've had anything else to focus on. So, you know, I am appreciative of all that work. I'm really hope, well, actually, one other thing I want to say is that I actually think this public hearing on the budget has been the most productive one I've been a part of. So, and so I want to thank the community too for their engagement and for the questions that they asked. And I'm happy that we could, you know, answer some of those as we went along. I also hope that this, that Dr. Bucky's presentation cleared up some of the questions that had been raised over the past few weeks by the community. I think on Tuesday night, we had, you know, there were probably a few sensational soundbites, I think is maybe how I'll term them, that maybe caused some confusion at best. And I think the one that I really just want to make sure that we address is that we are defunding our schools because that simply is not the case. In my, now this is my third budget season on the school committee. I would say the selectman, the town administrator and the finance committee have been incredibly supportive of our schools. And they've worked with us collaboratively to find solutions to meet our needs. And I think that this budget is another example of that. So I do want to thank the town, Dr. Bucky, the school committee, everyone who's kind of worked on this and gotten us to this point. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Sarah?
I just have some notes as we went along with what people said. So, you know, we started off with Ms. Kendall speaking about her concerns about reliance on one-time funding for reoccurring revenue. And I think it was David that spoke to the fact that there's a move in government in, in, in schools and in towns to move towards this one-time grant funding. And I just want to be clear there, in no, in no municipality, in no business, in nothing I have ever seen, is it advisable to use one-time funding for reoccurring needs? So if you have one-time funding for a one-time expense, absolutely, that's what you do. But what I'm seeing in this budget is one-time grant funding for telephones that we knew we needed, for wiring that was outdated, that we knew we needed, for a math curriculum that we've known for a few years we needed. And also, not, not just the foresaw that we knew we needed these things, but that they're not one-time expenditures. They're three-year reoccurring. And our funding source at this point is not secured. I mean, I know David made some points too, that he's hopeful with all this extra COVID money that's coming in. You know, some of that will come to us. And my assumption is definitely some more will come to us. But we would be really remiss to not also assume unforeseen expenditures from COVID will come for us. Learning loss, extra social emotional needs, even more technology. I feel like the technology piece just keeps coming and coming and coming. And one of the biggest pieces I worry that hasn't been built in is this idea of we will continue to have students that cannot return to school because of health needs. You know, it will not be a gigantic portion enough perhaps to, you know, require what we've had to date, but it will be, you know, more significant than one or two. Now, those students will need to either be handled as essentially medical outplacements, whether that's through an actual medical outplacement facility or whether it's through programs like tech in these other ones we're currently using and quite frankly, getting really not great feedback from our, the users on this. So I'm hoping we steer away from those, but none of that comes without a cost. And all of those costs is what this COVID money is kind of, the net is there to catch us on that. And I, I continue to have concerns that, you know, we hear, we heard from Michelle the other night, that we are now putting our applications in now because we have to, because we need the money now. But that other towns that are, you know, waiting till, I think she said maybe July 1. And that we are burning through what we have quicker and what we're burning through it on is actually stabilizing elements that even if COVID disappeared or never came, would still be here. We would, we would still need to make math curriculum. We still would need phones. I mean, poor Dr. Bucky, I called and it was like, I said to him like, this should be on camera because like the phone failed. Well, he's trying to talk to me. And this is, this is a constant occurrence and it's been for a long time. COVID did not create this. Can we use the COVID money? You know, it's, it's not for me, you know, well, actually, it actually is for all five of us to decide if we can do that. But, you know, the guidelines come and if they fit into some of those, then, you know, so be it if that's what we have to do. But I do feel strongly that we are continuing a reliance on one-time funding for reoccurring costs and not as a concern. The staffing of the nurse, again, Sandra Callahan made excellent points. You know, the spaces we built into Brown, you know, the vice principal's office alone at the square footage price was an extra $50,000. If we didn't need it, if we weren't going to staff it, that's $50,000 for one office. Now, if we don't need a B C B A and we did an office for them, that's not, you know, so you can, you can get the theme of how things continue to kind of add up that if we, if these were not staff positions we needed to, then, you know, we didn't. I, I must have completely missed in the budget, and I apologize for this, where we added the faculty for the STEM program. And that's on me. I didn't see it, but I did hear Dr. Bucky say that we added faculty to, to teach the STEM curriculum at the new school. So if, just offline, if later you can email me or tomorrow or whenever, I, I just didn't see it and that's, that's my fault. You know, again, the outplacements, I am concerned about that plan and where that, that money's going to come. And, you know, people noted that every year we do continue to lose students to private. And while we save money because less students, our enrollment goes down, we adjust our faculty. We don't want to be losing students to private because they don't feel they can get what they need now. So that exodus is a concern. And then just for clarification, and two of the budget meetings I was in, I remember Megan asking, could we put the phones under the Esser? And I thought Michelle had said no. So it says, it says that we're using one-time funding for that. So I was just wondering if you could identify what the one-time funding source is for the phones in the tech? Because I thought we could put the tech under the Esser, but we couldn't put the phones. So if again, between now and next week, you can just let me know what that funding source is. That would be good. If we collaborate for an H R and tech position, which I think the collaboration is fine, then could we, is there any type of agreement? Will a portion of those salaries come off of our operating budget and move on to the town's operating budget? Or is it that, you know, they'll stay on ours, but it's a help that we can give to them and collaborate? And I don't know that I have an opinion one way or another, and I'm just, I'm wondering if there's potential more savings coming our way if we do find a way to collaborate those, if we can, you know, estimate that half of those salaries will come off our books. On your slides, Dr. Bucky, are we relying on any foreign tuition from revolving funds? Because with the current state of affairs with travel and we're not, okay, because that's a book. And, and then the K tuition, I know that was a concern I had last year. We got in a little trouble with that this year. I did see that their, the acronym that we use for our enrollment is projecting, yes, thank you, is projecting a 23% enrollment drop over the next nine years. That's, that's kind of a, you know, an eye opener from two points of view. I mean, we just built a school for 450, so that's a little bit like, you know, a little unnerving because we'll see the drop at the lower grades first. But also do they base that on less students or students in Marblehead at the time? Or that they, they foresee our exodus to private continuing to grow? And I did see we're dropping two sections, two classroom teachers at both the first and second grade at Brown.
That is correct.
I, beyond the fact that we built it for five sections, so again, those are two more classrooms that we, I guess, didn't need, especially if our enrollment's going down another 23% over nine years. I, I am concerned. Historically, our largest jump has been, first grade at Bell has each year picked up, you know, 10 to 20 kids upon, on top of what happened from kindergarten. We didn't see that this year in, from just, you know, that kind of being my pool as far as families I know, I think it's because a lot of those families chose to stay private that extra year. We have a lot of schools in town that do provide private for that, that age group, but don't go all the way through. But, but, you know, I have a concern with dropping those levels when we have historically seen that jump up. And they've always come in to what will be the Brown community that they've, they've, anybody new in district at that age group has always come into the Brown community. So those are mainly my points. And any clarifications, I'm fine. If, you know, I get those in the next few days, just so I have that data when we, when we are expected to vote next week.
Yeah, I will just speak to a couple of things. I want to make sure that I didn't misspeak. The STEM space is outfitted. We ordered the supplies, materials, small wares. There is not a dedicated teacher in the budget, Sarah. You did not miss anything. So if people heard my answer to that question as we added a teacher for that, we did not. Classroom teachers that are currently at Brown will have accessibility to the space to use the supplies for STEM activities, but we have not hired a separate STEM teacher. And then the other things, the, Sarah, I can send you the NASDAQ report if you ever have insomnia. It'll be great. It is a co, what is it? A morbidity analysis against birth rates. And so it's a rather extensive document. I think I sent it to school committee, but I'll send it again because it really goes into the deep weeds of how they come up with those numbers. And I was recently in a community that had to do a building project because they built a school for 450 20 years ago, and now it has set, it had 700 in it. And so I would, you know, I would want to be potentially where we are in Marblehead, where we have a facility that could house more children rather than constructing something that's too small from the beginning. And so we may have the luxury of space, but I have never been in a school where every inch, people don't find a use for it. And so the fact that we have it, I think, Sarah, you have said if you build it, they will come. It is probably the reality that we will find uses for all of those space. I don't know the conversations about leadership at Brown School versus Glover that preceded me, but I did not know that there was ever an indication that there would be an assistant principal, although, you know, as you look at the building plans, there's an assistant principal's office. Did I, were there other things, Sarah, that you touched upon that I didn't?
There, you, you did excellent. There was one or two, but I think that they were funding, funding source questions. So I can follow up with you and Michelle on that.
Great.
Well, just sorry, go ahead.
No, no, because I'm going to make a joke and you probably have something serious to say.
All right. Well, we'll wait for your joke in, you know, with anticipation. But just, just to clarify, my question around the technology piece was around applying the E rate. So that, my understanding is we cannot apply to the telephones. So that is just to clarify, that was where my question was to Michelle in previous meetings.
Certainly. And I know Stephen can connect with Sarah as well on the E rate and the funding and how we're using stimulus money to fund the technology piece of that. Again, I want, I want to be clear that everything's above board, that we are not trying to make a shaded gray area for how these funds are, are used. And the history in this district, I can appreciate the hesitancy. But we are doing our due diligence to make sure that the decisions for using stimulus money are not only the letter, or not only the spirit, but the letter of the law as well. And my joke was, when Sarah called me, I said it was a Saturday Night Live skit, that you just can't make it up, that she was patched into me and then gone. Telephone should not be that hard in 2021.
Emily, I think you're, oh, maybe David's hand was up first. So I don't, does anybody want to talk over somebody else?
No, I'm sorry. I did put my hand down from the previous time.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make a quick note about using the one-time funding for this year's budget. I think, I know it's not ideal. I know it's not great for budgeting, but we're also in a not great situation beyond our school with the pandemic. And I think that we have to kind of be creative this year. And we are, like it's been said, we're starting a strategic plan. We're going to take all of these into consideration, create numbers and try to make a plan and a budget that's going to work for us. So I just want to say that I think this year's budget is good and it's great. And Sarah, if you keep talking about it, but what's your solution? Do you have something, a different way to do it? There's a lot of criticism, but what's the, do you have a different way you'd like to see it done?
Yeah. No, I, I would like us to advocate for getting what we need. And we, and that can't, that, that can't start a week before. I mean, this is work that, you know, when we started talking about this back in January, we should have been doing, when we got, first got this priority list back in, it was in January or February, but it's been several weeks. I mean, quite honestly, this is work that should have started, you know, two years ago. This is, this is constant work that needs to be done and.
Well, just to, two years ago.
Question, can I answer?
Yep, you can.
So, you know, I, I haven't, I, I feel like there's a lot of people that have said, you know, we can't get the funding because of the pandemic. But when you look at our numbers, actually, as heartbreaking as it is, and I do find it heartbreaking that we have benefited financially from a pandemic, to be perfectly honest. Marblehead has lost, I can't remember if it's 30 or 35 citizens. You know, people's lives are forever changed. What has happened to our students, you know, our staff, just everybody, every one of us, even every one of us sitting at this table has been negatively impacted. The one thing that hasn't been negatively impacted, and I would argue the only thing that has not been negatively impacted is our budget, because we have had a tremendously huge influx of funding that funded things like, I don't even know, countless laptops, countless technology that, that we have needed for years. And I see John's head shaking and I'm sure Stephen has like explained this to him and he knew so much of it before. But these were needs we've always had. So to say we're in this pickle because of COVID, the only thing that COVID has helped in, in our world is our finances. It, 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 it made them better. It gave us a. it made them better. It gave us a funding source to fix past past issues that we haven't been able to maintain. So I, I actually, to say we can't, you know, we have to tighten our belt because of COVID, our belt's the biggest belt we've ever owned because of COVID. And that, I, I find concerning. Um, you know, if COVID had not hit, we were still gonna need a math curriculum. We were still gonna need an H R director. We were still gonna need technology and phones and iPads and all this stuff, but, but like, it rained money from this horrific event in all of our lives. And like I said, the only benefit has been the money, because certainly I can't find another benefit. Um, and so I, I do think it's disingenuous to say we have to tighten our belt to get through COVID, because COVID brought a boatload of money with it, if nothing else.
Well, exactly. We're not, I don't think anyone said we're tightening our belt. We're actually using the money to fund things. We're doing exactly what you're talking about. So I just want to make that clear. And also, um, yeah, so just thank you, everyone, for the budget work.
Thanks, Emily. Um, you know, I, I, I completely agree with that. I don't think we've all said that we're tightening the belt. Um, I think, you know, this, the, the, the piece with COVID that, you know, that, that Sarah's referring to absolutely is a silver lining of it. There's, you know, I would make it the case that there's a little bit more silver linings, uh, than just money coming into laptops, but, you know, it also has been an incredibly difficult year. Um, and the incredibly difficult year piece to it was that instead of, you know, when we hired John last, or two, two Januaries ago, we had him coming in and immediately starting on a, on a strategic plan using, you know, the, the information that he was gonna gather upon his, with his entry plan. And then putting that into the works with, you know, working with Nan, working with Eric, working with Michelle, all the district administrators to hopefully, you know, we were hoping to have set up for an override this year. And then COVID hit. And we spent the summer figuring out how we were gonna reopen our schools and educate our children. So to the overdramatization of, of, of a lot of things is mind-boggling to me, to, to put it nicely. Um, uh, like, the scare tactics around this stuff, it's, it's, it's
Well said.
Gross. Um, and I'm, I'm kind of done with it. The process around this budget, excuse me. Excuse me.
I, you need to pause. Look it up. Point of order, you are personalizing.
Point of order, point of order, the chairman is speaking.
Excuse me, Sarah.
The chairman is speaking. The chairman is speaking.
Sarah, you can't speak over someone. I've muted you, by the way. You cannot speak over someone just because you say point of order. If you would like others to start doing that to you, we can start doing that to you. I am speaking. I have waited and listened to everybody else speak. The manipulative pieces of this need to stop. The process within this budget has been all above board. We are, we are unfortunately not going for an override this year. COVID has impacted things a lot. We've gotten some good things out of it, like the money, and many, many bad things. Those bad things are going to follow us into the future. So to, to, to kind of conflate the two, it, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So I want us to move forward on this. We have had a very collaborative process with the town this year. They have been, they have given us, we have gotten, as a school department, from federal funds and state funds, a lot of money. We've also gotten, the town has gotten a lot of money, and they have given the schools additional funds to help us through this time. We know that there is, I think, six million dollars coming into the town. That's sort of the, the estimates. They have, they have not looked over us at any point. My assumption, based on all historical data, is that they will not look over us again. So I, I just need that to be very clear to everybody on this call. We set forth with a list of priorities, and those priorities were looked at over and over, as they always are. Some kind of fell off for, for various reasons. We, you know, I'm about to do a home project, and I'm having conversations about things that I'm going to cut from my list of priorities. This is how budgets go. We have only a certain amount of money, whether you're talking about the schools or you're talking about the, the town. An override is, is one way in which we fix some of these things. Again, it's not happening this year. So to say that we have cuts and reductions, I don't see cuts and reductions. I see, we, we have, we are getting more money next year than we got this year, than we got the previous year. And so cuts mean that we're losing money. Cuts mean that, that things are going away, and we are adding things to our schools to make them better. We are not level funded this year. We have added money to our budget. So I really want to set the record straight that, that Sincom has been incredibly helpful in this. Jason has been incredibly helpful in this. The selectmen have been incredibly helpful in this, and we will continue to move forward and work with them, you know, in the way that we should. You know, I, one of the pieces that has kept me sane in, throughout the pandemic, is the Peloton bike that I, that I purchased, and their big thing, John knows, because I send him silly quotes all the time, but their big thing is together we go far. And that statement rings true here, just in spades. That together, as a town and schools, working together, we will go far. And that's where I come out tonight.
Well said, Sarah. Thank you.
So, i- if I may now, through the chair?
Sure.
So I, I, you know, continually am amazed at the collaboration I see from Jason, and my concern and all my comments have surrounded about, quite honestly, and they're reflective on me too, because we are not here as individuals, any of us, any one of us. We are here as a collective body, and it's only through our votes and our motions that we achieve things. And my concern is, we have not made the votes and the motions to do. Listen, we didn't bring the town information that we were ready for all this stuff. And I understand, I almost feel, and I'm not saying this is on John, last year, when we said, this is not the year, we knew COVID. We were, we were, we, we said it in the same meeting that we were talking about COVID with Bill. So I feel like, I, I personally feel we didn't set John up for success, because we knew it was COVID. We knew the impossible hurdle he and Nan and our building administrators and everybody else were gonna be up against with getting our schools open. And we said last year, we need to wait and, and next year's the year to do it, when, when, if, if we knew COVID was gonna keep us from doing that, we shouldn't have put that expectation out there. That has been my point, is we knew the variable that we're saying now is the reason we couldn't do it. We knew that variable last year, when we said this was gonna be the year. So I, my point is, we just need to stop doing that. We need to stop saying, okay, next year's the year, and then looking back and saying, well, we knew that variable when we said it, like, we knew Bill was gonna be our interim, but something changed. We knew John was gonna be dealing with a horrific year as a first superintendent. But like, this is my point. We keep doing this, and by we, it's a collective we. It's no more you or me, it's as a governing body, we are doing this as a collective unit. My issue is not with, you know, the Board of Selectmen or, or Jason. My issue is, because quite frankly, they have their job and they do their job. And our job is, is, is to advocate for a budget that is reflective of what we want an education to look like in Marblehead. And maybe it's that this is not what I want our education system, maybe to answer Emily's question, that's my issue. This is not what I want an education to look like in Marblehead. And if we advocated for something else, and then we get to this point, then that's where we got to. But I don't feel we started by advocating for what we want an education to look like in Marblehead. And that's where I feel we went astray. You know, whether it be COVID or whatever else, I don't feel we ever had that vision of a portrait of a graduate. And, and I think that that's a really good exercise. And I'm not dramatizing anything, Sarah. And my point was, I'd like this to be about not pe- personal people, and, and I feel like quite often, unfortunately, that's what it becomes. Um, and if we could move away from that, then we can do, you know, be better together, or whatever Peloton says.
Can I just, I just want to clarify, and then maybe we can move on. But, um, this list of priorities is the needs that our superintendent and our leadership team identified. It is the need that they have identified in their buildings and in our district. Secondly, we have said all along that we will be doing a strategic plan. And John is ready to start kicking that off. And that strategic plan, the plan that comes from working together as a district and with our community and, and town leadership to come up with what we want our school district to look like in the long term, is the strategic plan. And then we use that to budget for the long term. To do it backwards is not gonna get us where we need to be.
I completely agree. I don't, I just don't feel we've, we at any point start the process as a school committee.
That is what we're about to do. That is what we talked about two meetings ago with kicking off the strategic plan.
David? Oh, you're muted.
Not, not seeing any other people from the public that want to comment, I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
A second.
All right. I don't think we actually need a motion or a second. Um, so I will just adjourn the, uh, the budget hearing at seven forty-one.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us into our regular meeting, um, which starts off with commendations. Uh, Mr. Bauer, we've got you up first with the high school.
Thank you very much. Um, always a pleasure to be here. Um, I'll try not to go too long. Um, but if I had a list of all the commendations, um, it would be a, a long meeting here, and I know nobody wants to be here any longer. Um, I, I'd so appreciate it. I was thinking of a theme, and I think the theme is moving forward. Seeing the activities that are, they're coming to life, seeing our DECA program in virtual competitions at the state level, we had a number of students who placed very high. In fact, we have a state championship quiz bowl team, which is outstanding, and Ms. Gallivan and her group has done outstanding work. Our unified basketball team had a huge win today over Danvers, and just, it just gives a great feeling of pride to see all of our students and just bringing the community together. Performing arts, uh, they're moving along. They're preparing for the Spring Musical, the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. So if I'm in there, I hope they give me an easy word to spell. Our visual arts department, uh, the arts auction is, is moving along, and they're preparing the senior art show. Um, so that's wonderful. Our, the positive culture and climate that's building with our S E L committee and the, the work that Dr. Slavitt has done with this committee that has brought students into play, getting their feedback and suggestions for more connections. You know, I, we're hearing music between the blocks now, and they've been playing some good eighties music and some trivia and quizzes, and it's all really good and positive. Also, our team harmony that's getting into our ninth grade health classes and, and promoting positivity, um, and, and not being a bystander, and just the great work that they've done. Uh, before I move into the last piece, I do have to thank our P C O for their efforts to help vaccinate our staff. Um, and, and just, it's just wonderful, and just seeing the positivity with that. And a special shout out to the Capital H family, because I know Jared was, uh, accommodated last meeting by Mr. Fox. I know how many he brought through, but his, his brother Noah did a wonderful job too. So thank you to the Capital H family, as well as all the P C O. Lastly, I think just moving forward for April fifth, everybody's mind is on that. Um, and just breaking it down into four quick areas, our custodial staff, who I mentioned in the last meeting, has just been outstanding. They moved all those desks and chairs back. So this week, we had a transition, seeing how things would be. Um, and they haven't batted an eye. They've just been wonderful. And all the little pieces that each teacher, their needs, they're working through that list, and we'll be ready to go on the fifth, on Monday. Our teachers and staff, just outstanding. Every time I try to get into as many classes as I can, and just seeing the wonderful lessons and, um, you know, the, the piece that seems to me is they're moving forward and, and just doing a wonderful job, but also their input for the preparation has been outstanding, the little details that are really critical. Um, the Anna McMahon has been our rock from the Health Department. She's, you know, we lean on her, she's kept us safe. Um, her solid, no-nonsense approach is just welcomed, and I know our staff and other staff throughout the district reach out through all hours, and she's just, just been a huge help for all of us. And then last but not least, our guidance department, who have helped with the transition of students coming back in or going out to the learning model change. But everything is moving forward, because they're also meeting with all of our students to plan for next year's scheduling uh, and putting on great guidance programs. So, you know, I know that I can go on and on and on, but I'm just really proud of our staff. I'm proud of our students. Particularly our seniors, who've been extremely resilient, and I think it's gonna be exciting to see them all come back together. Also, our cohorts C, our remote learning cohort, who've done an outstanding, outstanding job. And they need recognition too, because it's not been easy for them, particularly our freshmen who haven't been in the building. Um, and, and they've just done a great job, and, and Lindsay Page and her leadership working with them has been outstanding. Um, and then certainly, just finishing it up with our families, and I appreciate all the supports that the families have provided. They've been very patient. It's not easy with all the transitions, and, um, they get our kids in, they figured out the traffic circle this morning. I took away the barriers yesterday. Um, and we made it through injury free, so we're looking forward to a great start on Monday. So anyway, just very happy to, uh, be part of it, and looking forward to it. Again, just, just very grateful for all the support we've received.
Thanks so much, Dan. Those are all really great and, and highly appropriate commendations. Um, I've got one commendation that I will, um, give, and then I'll ask everybody else if they've got one. Um, I just want to recognize the efforts of the building secretaries. Uh, they've been really important and, and just a huge part of organizing and, um, coordinating with the principals to, um, help with the schedules, and then with all of the sub coverages, and with the parents who are coming in to volunteer for the, um, lunches and everything. Um, so I, you know, I just, I want to give a good shout out, uh, to them. Um, and in that, I will also thank, uh, our, our own Lisa DeMire, uh, because she has been instrumental in getting all of that together. Um, she's running all of the quarries and the fingerprints and everything, and, um, that's time-consuming and, and very detailed work. Um, so we're, we're all really grateful for all of the work and efforts that has gone into uh, getting kids back into the buildings more, and, and to the parents that are volunteering, uh, for those lunch positions as well. Does anybody else have any commendations this evening? All right, um, that.
Actually, the superintendent's gonna jump in.
Go right ahead.
Um. First, the collaboration around the budget has been great, but that work can get so tunneled and get me trapped at Widger Road. And so I went to the unified basketball game today. And I'm not gonna get choked up, but it is exactly what I needed, because it was, it's, it's what we go into this business to do. And to see the joy and the fun and the teamwork and all those life lessons, it made doing the budget presentation easier this evening. So unified basketball team, shout out from the superintendent.
You're gonna make us all cry.
Thanks, John. All right, that leads us into our, uh, minutes, um, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was, um, just two, nine twenty-one that made it into the Dropbox. Uh, so I will ask for a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from February ninth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Were there any additions or clarifications that need to be added on that one? All right, uh, I will call a roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
And Megan Taylor?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries five to zero. Thanks, guys. Um, John, that leads us back to you with the superintendent's report. Would you like to introduce the next speaker, or would you like me to?
Um, you, either way, you go ahead.
All right, um, so we have, joining us this evening is, uh, one of our teachers at the high school, Ms. Candice Slaney, and then Jody Smith, a member of our community. And Jody, forgive me, um, I'm going to forget all of the ways in which you, um, support and give to Marblehead. So when you turn your camera on and are able to speak, feel free to fill us in, um, because you're, you're of, of great value, I know. Um, so, Ms. Slaney, I know that you've got a presentation to give, so I'm gonna make you a co-host, and they are here to talk with us this evening about Juneteenth and the North Shore Juneteenth organization, uh, that they are a part of.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Let's see.
Let's see. All right. So let me put this in the present mode. I'm hoping you can see.
We can.
All right. Well, yes, I'm Candace Liny. I'm a Spanish teacher at the high school. And I am the team harmony advisor at the high school. And I've, I first did that in two thousand and five and then took some time off when my kids were young and then have been doing it for a while. Jody Smith is the liaison for the North Shore Juneteenth Association. Her skill, her children went through Marblehead Public Schools. And her daughter Sophia was part of Team Harmony when she was there, but not when I was a leader. So she is a wealth of information for us about this great organization, the Juneteenth Association, North Shore Association. So I'm also a part of the Marblehead Task Force Against Discrimination. I've been a member for two years. And during one of our more recent meetings, Jody and Nicole McLean, who started the North Shore Juneteenth Association and who is a Army veteran. She recognized that there wasn't a lot of opportunity on the North Shore to celebrate the Juneteenth celebration. And for the black communities, it is something very common in, in many parks. There's celebrations and big cookouts. And so she recognized that need on the North Shore. And so it's just been a wonderful organization that is also promoting the contributions of black Americans. So do you know what Juneteenth is? It's the annual commemoration, there we go, that marks the day when the General Gordon Granger reached Texas to inform the enslaved people there that they were free. And it occurred two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. So not a lot of people know about this history, but in the black community, it is widely celebrated and almost considered to be Black American, Black American Independence Day. Okay, so now let me just. Okay, so I think I may have gone back too far. Sorry, one second. Okay. So the Juneteenth Organization provides opportunities for businesses and schools to buy gear from them to promote Juneteenth. So there are a couple of options. They have these Juneteenth banners that are very adorable and they cost ninety-five dollars. And then a smaller flag, which costs sixty dollars. At, at the presentation through the TFAID is what I tend to call it. It was discussed to have a ceremony in Marblehead to raise the flag this June. Not on actual Juneteenth, but sometime, sometime in June, early June. And I thought it would be a great idea if we're raising the flag in Marblehead, either at Elba Hall or Old Town Hall, wherever it may happen. Wouldn't it be wonderful to get the banner in all of the schools? And then to also possibly raise the flag, which I'll talk about in a second. So let's see, I can't read it because, there we go. Okay. So the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updated the school calendar. So in twenty twenty-one will be the first time that Juneteenth is officially celebrated as a holiday. So what would I like to see happen for the Marblehead Public Schools? Is to provide a Juneteenth banner for each school in the district in a high visibility area. And granted, it's only a symbolic gesture, but it's a start. The organization offers an elementary school art program, which can be bought as one program and shared throughout the schools. So that would cost about two hundred dollars. Purchase a Juneteenth flag for the Marblehead High School cafeteria, which costs sixty dollars to accompany the recently donated gay pride flag and Black Lives Matters flag. Fund the, a professional study group. So this is probably the most important part for me as we're talking about budget and, and big term, long-term goals. It would be such a good thing to consider. To examine the, the curricula, what's available, what do we have, where, what are we missing? And one of the parts of the Department of Education that I, something really spoke to me at a presentation a couple of years ago was the idea of the windows and mirrors in the curriculum. So we want, we want the curriculum to be a place where kids see themselves celebrated, but also for other, for them to learn about others' experiences. And so for us to really have a study group that formally looks at each, you know, each grade level and say, you know, what's missing and they're, whoops, oh my goodness. There are, there are many, many resources on the DOE website that can help us like the text inventory guidance or the culturally responsive, social, emotional, actually, when I shut that off, there we go. All right. And then the last thing is the Black Lives Matter flags and the gay pride flag. So at the high school, we have the American flag in the cafeteria. And the graduating Team Harmony officers of the class of twenty twenty-one thought it would be a great idea for them to purchase a Black Lives Matter flag for the cafeteria. And we also had a donation for the gay pride flag. And we thought it would be fabulous to have those represented in the cafeteria in a highly visible spot. And my daughter and some of the officers last year spoke at a Board of Selectmen meeting. And something that she said really, really hit me about how seeing that flag makes people feel safe and supported. And it'd be the same thing by adding a Black Lives Matter flag to our cafeteria in along with the gay pride flag and hopefully in June, a Juneteenth flag as well. Okay, I was way too, that took longer than I had thought. I'm sorry about that.
That often comes the case.
Any questions?
Sarah, you've got your hand up?
I think this is wonderful and I think, you know, thank you for laying out all the details and everything. And that, that is an incredibly small financial ask for something that has the potential to have a significant impact. So I, I think that this is great. One thing I wanted to ask this as a follow-up. I, I had a chance to hear you speak a little bit at the Task Force Against Discrimination meeting. And at that point, you talked about how, how Team Harmony was going, was planning to go into the village school and work with some of their students, which is, you know, I look forward to hearing more about because I think that's wonderful. Is there a chance for them to kind of open a dialogue more about Juneteenth during those visits? Or maybe as we get closer to that, maybe because they've already built a rapport with those students, maybe do some type of activity with them or something to kind of hide, just bring it another step to, to, to further it. And then I also think about, you know, this isn't necessarily related to, or at all related to Juneteenth. But if you have this group, you know, do they want to at some point over the next several months, you know, look at some books that they would like to see at all levels of our, our library? And we can maybe make a list of things we'd like to add to kind of bring in more awareness of, you know, this important date, but also other important events that kind of would speak to things. So it was just, well, we had you here. I thought I'd throw that out there and thank you for your presentation.
Yes. So this week we actually presented an all freshman and sophomore health classes. So they use their like very limited free blocks to donate their time to, to that. We filmed a video for vets to be sent soon to, for them to use in the advisories. And next week, the date had to change a couple of times with the change in calendars. So next week they're working with Village and doing those one, one fifteen to two fifteen or one thirty actually to two fifteen sessions with those Village kids. I think those are really great ideas, but the program that we have now is sort of like all set and they put a lot of time into this. But I think yes, going forward. And I think that's why I thought the elementary art program for, you know, for only two hundred dollars to be used throughout the elementary schools would be, since it's the very first year that, that it's recognized as a holiday in the state of Massachusetts. I think it's really important that all of the elementary schools, I would love to see it school-wide, you know, have everyone just stop, pause and recognize what this is. And so I do think getting the banners as soon as possible, getting the art program set. And yeah, and you know, just keeping at it.
Thank you so much for that.
If I could just jump in real quick. Sarah Fox asked about books. If you're interested in books, especially around black lives and black contributions, there are fantastic lists online. You don't even have to look them up. If you want to email me, I can send you the lists. And if there's budget to be able to add them into the libraries, they can easily do that.
That's great. And every year, parents donate books. I know at least at the elementary school, it's always been a thing. On children's birthdays, parents can donate a book to the library and there's like a little sticker that goes in it or whatever. So if that list, if we can even get it up on our website somehow, that might be something that parents are interested in, in sourcing from just to kind of build that base.
That's a great idea. Thank you both for coming. Emily, did you want to say something? I just saw your hand wave.
Real quick, when the banners arrive, if we agree to do this, which I really hope we do, can there be just like a quick little thing that each teacher can explain to the students in every grade classroom? I don't know if it goes out to families, but just to broaden the awareness even into our community. Because I'm sure people don't know or know, but don't know a lot. So just trying to get as much knowledge out, I think, using the visual and then just a little blurb.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
But I think it's great and thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think that's it. You know, if we're, if we're going to do this, we definitely want to be understanding and, and actually educating our students as to, as to what this means. I know I had worked in an agency at one point where I was one of three white people and still didn't come away from that with an, an understanding of what Juneteenth actually was. And it was a big celebration at that agency. So I think, you know, after learning about it this past, over this past year, it's, it's, you know, it's one of these pieces that our history books tend to overlook. So I'm glad that we're starting to look into that. And I think, you know, if I was a Baton gal, I think our strategic plan is going to have something to do with some diversity and equity pieces to it. So I think this fits nicely in, in that direction as well. So I thank you both for coming this evening and, and filling us all in on this. And, and for, and for, you know, being a part of this within our school systems and, and within our community.
Can I just, not to belabor the point, because I think all the ideas that have been shared are great. And I do want to thank you for both coming to us to present, because I do think this is an important topic and date to make sure that we start to push that information out. And I'm glad we're going to celebrate it. I'm glad we're going to start to teach our children about it. So I think this is definitely something I'd like to see us move forward on. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And actually, the school committee, I think as, as Lisa and John and I were talking, we'll see the Juneteenth piece come back hopefully at our next meeting, because it does not impact our calendar this year because we end before Juneteenth. But next year, it is a, it is a state holiday, so we will actually have to amend our calendar a little bit for next school year. So we'll be bringing that. I didn't put it on tonight because I was worried that tonight was going to be rather long, so. But thank you both very much. And thank you for all the work that you're doing on this.
Thank you so much.
John?
Well, that's a tough act to follow because the news in the district update is not near as compelling. I'm talking about us getting our hands smacked. You had available to you in the Dropbox, the enforcement order for the Green Street property. And it really follows the administrative axiom of no good deed goes unpunished. We had been having conversations with local bike group about being able to use some school property to build some BMX trails and ramps and things like that. And those conversations were underway, but work started ahead of those at the Green Street property. And they were abutting wetlands. And so we got the citation that you saw. I had an opportunity to go out with the town engineer and the head of the Conservation Commission and look. And the, the work that was done was not actually sanctioned by the bike group that we were talking with. So we're meeting with Jason Silva and the bike people and Sarah and I next week. And then we have to appear at this hearing on Thursday of next week. So no school committee, but there'll be a conservation hearing. And I just wanted to bring it to the committee's awareness and answer any questions that I can. I'm not sure that I can answer any questions at this point. But we did meet with the Bike More people last Friday to have some initial questions of clarification. And I have just asked that we put a hold on the Green Street property. We have installed some no trespass signs until this is resolved. We have kind of given them a green light for the high school property off the tennis courts to continue that conversation. But I think even if we get some sort of agreement, the cat is out of the bag on Green Street right now. And I wouldn't want to exacerbate what's already a citation. So you probably have already heard about this out in the community, but speaking about it in a public meeting, I thought would be an important next step for the committee.
Yeah. And thanks, John. And obviously I've been a part of this. I brought it to you guys a few weeks back. Sarah, I do see your hand, so I will, I, I def, it's definitely noted. And, you know, I think in all of this, and, and I'm in complete agreement with just pausing on this Green Street while we kind of clean up anything that needs literally and metaphorically to be cleaned up. But that, you know, I, I, I live near Robinson Farm. I walk my dogs in Wyman and steer every single weekend. And so these, these bike ramps and things are, are everywhere. They're in all of these spots. So I think to me, this really highlights the need for this project to eventually be able to go forward. So I am really hopeful for a quick resolution on this and so that we can kind of get back to talks. Because, you know, I do think that Bike More's heart and heads are in the exact right place. You know, this wasn't sanctioned by them. It was part of the confusion at the beginning of, of when this sort of all started to get ruffled. And so, you know, in meeting with them, they, they actually want to work with the kids to understand how conservation works and the, and the, you know, the priority of wetlands and doing this in a way in which it doesn't hurt our surrounding ecosystems. But that, you know, that we're all working together to, as human beings, be outside, but also preserving the, the beauty and the, and the nature that, that we're going through. Sarah?
And I, I think that learning piece is, is excellent. Just for clarification, you said, do you have to go to CommCom next Thursday night?
We do.
So are we, that's when we are voting our budget on the calendar. Are we changing that?
That's why I listed it in gray on the budget calendar, because we are now needing to be at the Conservation Commission meeting. So I don't know if we want to, I don't know if this is the time through the chair to schedule it at an earlier time and keep the April eighth date or pick a different day next week for that vote. But I think people have April eighth on the calendar. So if we could start at five or six in order for Sarah and I to be able to go to the conservation meeting.
That's the only agenda item, right? It's not like a full meeting?
Correct.
That is correct.
All right. Yeah, that's fine. And then is the, has the group that built this been identified? And I'm not asking for you to disclose because quite frankly, I don't want that information. But I ask that just simply because as part of the learning curve, could they be brought into the mix of, you know, whatever needs to be done to, to, to repair and fix this land? Because again, that's another learning piece. I think the spirit was, was good and genuine in that these kids are looking for a healthy outlet. You know, as we know from CommCom and, and there's people that, there's animals, there's plants, there's people that, you know, use our wetlands and all, but it's, it's very vitally important. So I think the learning You know, use our wetlands and all, but it's, it's very vitally important. So I think the learning piece, but also, you know. A little elbow grease of undoing what they did might be. A, a, a good learning curve as well. So I didn't know if we were able to find out who did it and if, you know. That was something they were willing to do, but I think that would be a really good piece of this puzzle as well.
I don't know that those, that the kids have been identified. It's certainly a question that we can follow up on that maybe is in the record somewhere.
Yeah. And maybe if it's just like, you know, there won't be retribution, just please show up today and, and help. And then my other question is, is there any? Harm that could come to the district like via a citation or a fine? Or, you know, is there going to be a cost to us fixing this? Or are we in violation of it? Like, is, is there any real like result on the district and or liability? Because we, we didn't have the lease in place and now it kind of brings into the liability piece. And then lastly, are we, are we sure this is shut down? It's no longer in use? Because now that we know it was there, there's a bigger liability, I would think.
The short answer to your question is, we don't know. When I went out with the town engineer and the head of the conservation commission, I asked that. Because they were talking about taking down the ramps and bringing in dirt and in the superintendent's mind, those have dollars associated with it. And so I was asking about, is this a citation that comes with a cost? And I think we'll know more about that next Thursday. And the liability question is certainly one that we're exploring both with our council and town.
If there is a cost, we could maybe. Ask if we can identify this group, if they can help towards that, that cost.
Absolutely.
Emily?
So I just. I don't know when the incident happened, but I do know that there's been some confusion about the land since we talked about it in our meeting. I think a lot of people think, thought that, oh, now we can go use it. And I'm getting multiple people asking me about this and sending their kids up there. And I literally told someone the other day, don't send. Your kid there anymore, because it's not happening yet. So I think we need to clarify that as a district, maybe in an update. You could put it in, just say, we can't use it yet, but explain what happened, because people are super confused. And I just don't want kids to go up there and get in trouble. And then have that, you know, because that can really upset kids if, because they're, they think they can use it. So if we could just tell everybody to hold off until we say it's a go.
Absolutely. Is it too soon to talk about a community relations liaison or?
But John, you did say in your email, you posted no trespassing signs, right? Or you plan to? So I mean, it's pretty clear if there's no trespassing signs that.
Right. And I totally agree with that. But my friend, I was telling her there should be signs up. She's like, but the kids aren't going to read them. You know, if they don't see them on their bikes. So I just, I think just to cover everything, just to.
And I'll ask building principals, particularly from probably, I don't know. Four to four up, or do we have K to three students?
I think K to three. I think one of my third graders friends loves to bike all over town, so.
Okay, so I'll ask each of the building principals to put something in a weekly update.
And I can actually reach out to the head of school at Tower as well and ask her to put that as well. All right. Any other questions?
The other district update that I have, and it seems so bizarre to talk about my entry plan in April. And this isn't an April Fool's joke. We're still actually talking about it. But I have asked Sarah if we can have a special meeting. Yes, me asking for an additional school committee meeting on the 29th. So that I can present the entry plan, the findings, and then roll out the strategic planning process as we will undertake as a district. And what that will look like, which will start in earnest in early or in mid-May. In identifying, there'd be focus groups and there'll be surveys and so to outline that, that will lead us. Into developing that strategic plan, which will inform a budget. And perhaps the priorities necessary to build a foundation for how we budget moving forward. How do you like that for an obtuse way of getting to budgeting for the next year?
Avoiding the O word.
2019, you said.
If I can just request that it start, you know. Six thirty or later, if I can put that out there, it makes it a lot easier. And then. We must have a building committee meeting this week, or this, this year, please not this week. Not this year.
This month.
This month. But with the vacation, I just don't know, like, I want to, that we, you know, we might, that will be another juggling offline thing. But that if we can keep as many of these meetings on Thursday, I think it makes it really easy, much easier for the public to think school things happen on Thursdays around seven. It's just easier to kind of make that accessible.
I can definitely talk with David and make sure that we're not, I think Lisa's got them all marked on her big board calendar in her office as well.
And then the in-person learning update is, it's happening. We're going to have in-person learning. I think we've been talking about it and it's super exciting. That we're getting to Monday. And I've actually heard Dan and Matt on the phone with different people. Very excited about this, that there's the next step toward normalcy. And so our district K to 12, April 5th. That's our Easter present. That's what the bunny's bringing us, is that we will be full in person. At least seven to 12 will be half days, five days a week, and our pre-K to six students will be full days.
I'll put it out there as a passive miracle as well.
There you go.
No, it's very exciting. And, you know, we, in, we went over and just, you know, Matt and Dan kind of spoke to it a little bit more in, in reopening this morning. And just assured a lot of the things that were set on Tuesday night. And, you know, it's just, it is, it's really exciting. And I'm, it's just such a huge step for the district. And I'm just really hopeful that particularly at these older grades, we are reducing distancing and quarantining. And sort of making everybody a little antsy. I really hope that, again, the community comes together. Wears masks all over the place, you know, in car pools, at, at, at little parties that, that are, you know, hopefully occurring outside in their backyards. Masked, distanced, all that good stuff, so that we can really continue this forward.
One thing, if I add to reopening is Nan held a meeting, was it last night, Nan? For remote, for remote parents. And as a remote parent, I, I just found it really. It was great to like have that, that time to come to her and ask her our questions, because our questions are very different than the bulk of the population. And, you know, she was candid. She didn't have an answer. She told you she didn't have an answer. She said, put your information in the chat and I'll get back to you. So I just want to, from the remote population, thank you for, you know, giving us that time to address our concerns as, as things do shift.
Megan?
So I said this in reopening, but I think it bears repeating here for the larger audience too, is. This is a huge, exciting milestone, right? Like, we've been working all over a year at this. And everyone has put in like 120% of our waking hours to get here. That's families, administration, teachers, custodians, I mean, across the board, everyone has done that. And, you know, when we talked about this back in February, the end of February, whenever it was. We all realized it was a big undertaking, right? A big transition and the logistical nightmare, especially at the older grades. And I've just been so impressed and I'm just proud really to even be remotely associated with the work. That the principals and the leadership and every single person that is, that works for our district has put in to get us here. It's been thoughtful. It's been, you know, they've gone through every last detail. And they're really kicking off this event as an exciting milestone that it is. So I just want to thank everybody and just come on April 5th. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
I'm done.
All right, great. Thank you, John. Michelle, that leads us on to you with the monthly finance, monthly financial reporting, including the COVID expenditure update. Do you need to share your screen?
Sure, if I could, that'd be great.
I will make you a co-host. Should be all set.
Okay, thank you. Make sure I'm pulling the right one up. Just had it. No, and I don't know where it went. Okay, so the monthly financial report for the month ended February 28th, 2021. This is just over a month ago, so probably at the next meeting, we will be talking about March. But so as of February, the year-to-date expenditures for the general fund were $21,129,814. Or 52% of the operating budget. Just a few areas that I typically report on or keep an eye on each month. The first is special education. I am very extremely happy and excited to report that we are actually breaking even at the current moment. In terms of our special education out of district tuition costs. This is a number that has fluctuated. It started at last year at this time. It was a little bit higher, significantly higher. Came down through the budget process as we had some decreases. We had a unexpected shortfall when our circuit breaker funding came in this year earlier. And we have been able to close that gap and we are down to $4 difference right now. So I am just thrilled to report that out. So right now, we are not projecting any deficit in that category. And we have reached our April 1st deadline is when we are no longer responsible for any private school movements. At this point in the year, so while we are responsible for some other movements, if they should happen this year. Private school is a big one, so we have, we have met, met that threshold and we should be in good shape for the rest of the year there. Fingers crossed. In terms of substitute teaching costs, we have spent $38,000 or 16% of that budget. There is a little bit of an increase in terms of hourly wages for parays and tutors that have been paid that aren't charged to this line. But still, we are significantly under budget in that area. A couple of new accounts that I'm watching at this time is, first is custodian overtime. We have seen a rapid, rapid increase in that area due to additional cleaning. We have a couple extended leaves right now in staffing and we've been doing a lot of furniture moving at this point. So we've had a lot of overtime in that area. Right now, we are over budget by just over $3,000. This is also an account that typically we have run over budget each year that I can, I can tell in terms of the trend. If the charges were correct. And I do expect that we will continue to run into deficit, obviously. And I'm projecting a shortfall of about $35,000 to $40,000 by the end of the year. Which I do think we'll be able to absorb with another line, so I'm not, not concerned about it. I just want to keep an eye on it. And the other area that I'm watching closely is unemployment compensation. We have only spent just over $24,000 in this area of a $60,000 budget, but we are paid through. The month of November. However, with all of the chaos happening at the unemployment agency in terms of fraudulent claims. And due to all the pandemic claims, they are still way behind in reviewing their claims. And they can retroactively charge us back as many months as they see, see to award an employee or a former employee. So that is a bit of a, bit of an unknown number. But I am projecting right now that we will probably run about $30,000 in deficit in that account for the year. We should also be able to absorb that without too much difficulty. But I did just want to put it out there. It's something I'm watching each month. So that's it really. It's nothing else exciting in terms of the general operating budget. But I do want to touch base a little more in depth on the COVID funding report. The actual COVID funding report is through March 29th, which is actually just earlier this week. So you really have up-to-date information and not the February figures. I do have the COVID funding status report that I will pull up here. So, so far to date, we have spent our actual paid-out dollars, $1,538,000. We have encumbered basically ordered or reserved another $568,000. And we're anticipating expenditures of $269,000, but those are not specifically on goods that have been ordered. Or committed to at this point. But that total with all of those buckets will bring us to $2376,000. This is absolutely amazing that we've, we've come up with all of these funding sources or have been provided the opportunities of these funding sources. You know, they're all pretty much one-time funds. There's no recurring funds in here. I mean, recurring costs in here, so that's a great thing. And last month, I did detail, you know, the funding sources with the two new funding sources we had and the expiration dates. And that's on the bottom of the sheet here. So this does not include any of the new funding that we've all been talking about. We do not have certain figures on that yet. But we're, we're keeping our ears and eyes open, so as soon as we have any information on that, we will be sure to share that. In terms of also the COVID funding, I know there's been a lot of discussion about what we are earmarking the ESR2 grant for. So I wanted to detail that a little bit. I did that, include that in my memo, which I apologize, have to scroll way up again to that. So the, earlier this week, I had to submit for this grant. Deadline was March 31st to be able to use it for this current year. So even though it still carries forward, we just had to submit for it in March. So this is what our budget looked like when it was submitted and is still what our plan is right now. We are planning on spending roughly $81,000 in supplemental classroom staffing and meeting students' needs. $65,000 on air purifiers. We have ordered some crazy number in addition to the ones we ordered in the fall. I believe it's another 268 air purifiers we have ordered. So that comes to a price tag of just under 65. We made an allowance for KN95 masks of $9,800. Rolling laptop desks. We had to remove a lot of teacher desks from the classrooms. We were adding more student desks back, so we can fit all of the classrooms in. All the students into the classroom, rather. And there's about a $20,000 price tag on those. Part of this grant requires that we spend a portion on mental health supports for students. So we are allocating $25,000. The grant requires that at least $10,000 be spent in this area. We are prepared to spend $25,000 at this time. Additional mobile smartboards for the districts for alternative teaching spaces when we need to move a group of students outside of a classroom with a smartboard. Total for that is $38,500. Identify technology needs such as laptop charging carts, student headphones, et cetera. And that is coming to an amount of $10,000. And lastly, we have $115,000 set aside for either additional technology, curriculum or facilities needs. Most likely, this is where the math curriculum will come from. That's our plan today. So I'm going with that. So that is about all I have to report on the COVID funds and the monthly financial report. If anyone has any, committee has any questions, let me know.
Sarah?
So since we're using the numbers you sent in for verification this week, part of that to cover the math. We have approval to use it in this fiscal year? So can we purchase the curriculum sooner so that we have more time for our staff to familiarize themselves with it?
We could, absolutely. As soon as I get approval on this grant, which I will, it's just a matter of sometimes they need additional information. We can absolutely do that, yes.
Okay, so I mean, obviously that's a Nan, Nan question, but I'm just thinking, if, if this is our funding source, if it's approved for this FY, not next FY. That is not a, you know what I mean? Like, why wait? Why not let our teachers start to, to do that extra work to prepare themselves? And, and hopefully not have it, you know.
Absolutely.
They've earned their summer.
I would definitely leave that to Nan and her team on that end, but yes, the funding would be available.
Okay. And then my question about the unemployment, is there a point at which, like, I know they can go back, but is there like a. Like their cap, they can't go back more than a year? Like, is there any point at which we start to know we get to get a little safer with those numbers? Or they can go back as far as they want?
That is a good question, and I, I truly don't know the answer. I believe they can go back as far as they want, as we are a self-insured agency. And, you know, self, self-insured group. But typically, we don't. But typically, we don't see things for more than a couple months outside of the current timeframe. But due to the pandemic, the agency was just slammed with fraudulent claims, and they're still working through those. But some of the fraudulent claims that they paid out, they have credited to us, and they're also working on crediting other claims that they have found that they should not have awarded, even though they weren't fraudulent. So we have a lot of coming and going with those expenses.
Given this, are we required to hold anything for that, anything retroactive that may come in after July 1 for this fiscal year? Because I know we do that a little bit for, just a small portion for special ed, but is that like a requirement we have to do or best practice? Like, do we have to do future planning, or no?
We do, we are not required, because anything they charge us retroactively is showing up on a current invoice. So really, it would be current charge. So legal to meet the guidelines of our municipal fiscal year. We would not have to. Best practice is if, if we still know that there are a significant number of claims that may be attributed to the previous year, I would hold over some funds if available.
And we're allowed to do that for that purpose, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, okay, that's really good information. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, thanks, Michelle. I don't think, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I mean, I've been through this so many times with Michelle. I'm good. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, that leads us on to our schedule of bills. We had schedule in the packet with the, all of the invoices. So can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling $3,315,140.31?
So moved.
Megan moved. Emily second. Any questions on any of those? All right, I will roll call Sarah Gold, yes, Emily Barron? Can you turn your?
Yes.
All right, there we go. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Megan Taylor?
Yes.
All right, thanks all. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Thanks, Michelle.
Just, I, I, just, it would be, it's more than necessary for me to recognize, Michelle. What I presented tonight was a collaboration between the two of us, and my humanities, language, arts mind works in a very different way, and Michelle suffers my questions that go all around numbers or present her numbers. And so she has been an invaluable partner. And when I was looking to become a superintendent, the advice was you have to have a good business manager, and we have a phenomenal business manager. So I just wanted to give that shout out to Michelle.
Absolutely. We hit the jackpot.
Yes, we did.
It's absolutely a team effort, and I'm so happy to be part of this team. Thank you.
But now we've chained her to her desk, so she can never leave us.
I think if there was a top thing that Bill did for us, finding and securing Michelle is probably it.
Legacy.
Yes, and that says a lot, because Bill did an awful lot for us, so. Invaluable, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we embarrassed her.
That leads us to our final portion, or I guess semi-final portion. So I've got on here the school committee involvement in the Coalition for Racial Justice. And I may tag team with Emily a smidge on this one. So Jackie Belfecker, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, had reached out to me, I don't know, a week or two ago, and talked with me a little bit about this coalition. It's a group throughout town. There are multiple other groups, such as the Racial Justice League, the Task Force, the Team Harmony, League of Women Voters, who are all involved in this coalition. And they are working on multiple things, but one of them is sort of these educational events for the community where they're picking topics to talk on and present on and kind of, you know, just update. And so the one that's coming up, I guess there's a couple of pieces within here. So they're asking for some school representation on this, on this coalition. And so that's one piece. And then, and they would like, preferably, the superintendent and then a school committee member to be a part of this ongoing. And then additionally, or sort of to drill down further into it, they have an upcoming event on April 27th at 7:00 PM. And Lauren McCormick from the Marblehead History Museum is leading it with, I believe there's another person, but I don't have that person's name.
Robin Taylor?
Robin Taylor, thank you. And Jackie Belfecker is moderating it, and it is a presentation on Lucretia and Joseph Brown, their history in Marblehead. There's been a bunch of interesting pieces that have kind of somewhat recently been uncovered on them. And so sort of presenting this is obviously very apropos with the naming of our new building after that couple. So they have asked us to join with these other groups to sponsor this event. When I asked, you know, sponsor to me, has a monetary piece to it? And Jackie said, absolutely not. If this is really just a support sponsor, that we would take a vote to be put on to our name. And I would, I would like for the Marblehead School Committee, as well as Marblehead Public Schools, to be kind of sort of joined with this in support, and that our names would be on the flyers, and, you know, we'd have somebody attend. Given that Emily's been doing a lot of this work, I sort of reached out to her, and she's been, you've been in contact with Lauren? I think you're muted.
Yeah, I asked her, I mean, I talked to her, I feel like, a lot. She's amazing about history. But yes, we talked all about this event, and she's shared the information with me.
Great, so I will actually read, because Emily had forwarded it on to me, the description of the event on the 27th. So it's, and I believe this is kind of what the flyers would look like and present. So the long-mired myth and misconception, the real history of Lucretia, Thomas Brown, and Joseph Brown is even more fascinating than the legend. Over the last few years, many individuals and organizations in town have uncovered new and exciting threads in the couple's lives. Together, they weave a short, a story of creativity, entrepreneurship, strength, community, and resilience that reflects the characteristics of Marblehead itself. Join Lauren McCormick, Executive Director of the Marblehead Museum, and Robin Taylor, writer and member of the Marblehead Racial Justice Team, for a discussion and moderated by Selectman Jackie Belfecker. So that's the event. I do, I would like to, you know, take an official motion for the school committee, along with the school, Marblehead Public School Department, to sponsor this event. So I'll start there.
So moved.
Sarah moved.
Second.
Emily second. Any questions on any of that?
I'm assuming that we can use our resources of the emails or any messaging we have going home to kind of just let our community know about this as well?
And we can put it on to our websites and everything to, to, to kind of, I believe it's a Zoom event, so we can have that information up there.
And would it be appropriate, like, from what you've heard, Emily and Sarah, would it be appropriate for us to include a student in this, like a high school student, or no? As a rep?
It's a good question. I can, I can reach out. I think, I think it may, I don't want to, actually, I don't want to even say, because I don't know if there are any students involved currently.
Yeah, I don't know, but that is a great idea, or at least to ask.
Because especially where Team Harmony is involved, so they're very well made these student representations already.
Then I bet there is, I don't know.
I just think the more involved the student body, you know, it just, it disseminates the information more.
Yeah. All right, I've got a motion, and it's seconded. Sarah Gold, yes, Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right, so that motion to sponsor that event, 5-0. And if we want to take a motion on this next one, that's fine. I'm kind of thinking that for the remainder of this school year slash this committee's assignments, that it would be appropriate for Emily to attend these events with John. Does, you know, I don't think we need a vote, because it's not a subcommittee. So if people are in support of that, and then, you know, we can look at, just as we're going to look at all of our assignments next year, we can look at that again.
Oh, absolutely.
And if you have, have a minute, like, after these or whatever, if you can just give us any, any good information that comes out of it, or any updates?
Updates, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, she can, she can absolutely, under the subcommittee and liaison updates, kind of fill us in. All right, wonderful. Thank you, everybody. That leads us to the review of policies. We've got policy BEDH, the public comment at school committee meetings. This would be our third reading of it. We did a few little changes last time. Those were reflected and put back into the Dropbox. Any further questions or issues with that one? All right, so can I get a motion to accept the policy change to policy BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily seconds. All right, Sarah Gold, yes, Sarah Fox?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Megan, that leads us to, and I, Megan and Emily, the school committee website, the push notifications.
Yeah, I forgot this was on the agenda, to be honest. But so when we set up our school committee website back in the fall, one of the things that we talked about adding in once it was up and running was push notifications. So, you know, we've got a number of meetings, obviously, on our calendar. How do we let people, how do we let the community know about those meetings? And more importantly, if things change. So Emily has figured out a way to do it, because she's our tech guru now. So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the way it will work, you know what, I'm going to take a step back. Emily, can you explain how it works?
Yeah, sure.
I'm just going to shut my mouth.
So on the school committee website, there is now a form right under our mission statement, where the people who want to be updated or alerted fills out with your name and your email address. And we've decided that on Sundays, we will push out an email that gives the, that week's meetings and times. And then if there's a change, you'll get an email as soon as we find out about the change and emails produced to be updated that way. So go sign up. And I will do my best.
Yeah, I just want to, right now, it's somewhat of a manual process. So Emily's the little person in the background, making sure all these emails get sent out. So this is our best effort. We're going to get it up and running. If everyone could have a little bit of grace with Emily, that would be appreciated. But that, you know, this is kind of what we really wanted to see with that website, because, you know, we do have a lot of meetings. We do want the community to be engaged. And how do we make sure that they're aware of not only the meetings, but if there are changes, and make it easy for them? So that was kind of the thought process behind this.
I'll put my whip away for a little while, Emily, but I'll bring it back out if you're taking too long to get this up and going.
So Emily, this will, this will, there's a way to automatize this, right? You're not going to constantly have to be like the little mouse in the wheel doing this, right?
For now, I might be the mouse until we can figure it out.
Okay, and then we post most of our...
Yeah, I just figured it out.
One, most of our meetings are, tend to be on Thursday, like, our bigger meeting, weekly meetings are on Thursdays. So they, they get posted on Monday or Tuesday. So people will typically get a second, at least two, two a week, right? Because those aren't, I mean, unless we try to get them posted, even though we're ahead of the 48-hour requirement, if we try to get them posted by Friday, just so we're not flooding people's inboxes.
You mean, well, like, by our calendar set, right? For every, the second and fourth, what are we, the first and third?
First and third.
Oh, so it won't be like a push notification with the actual agenda?
It will just be... No, 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 this will just be like, like a little newsletter, and then it'll have a link to our calendar where you can get all the information, like, once it's posted. Yeah.
And I think, you know, speaking just for these meetings, if we need it, the Zoom is always created. The agenda may not be posted, but if we wanted to put something like that in there, the Zoom is easy. And so that could be in there, but maybe that's overcomplicating it as well. And then I think, you know, it would include the, the subcommittee postings, too. So it would be, you know, the school committee is sending towards Thursday, but the subcommittee's need at various times.
If it's on our school committee calendar, it's going to be in the email. And that is one of the reasons why, you know, we really did push to get monthly subcommittee meetings set up and in a rhythm so that those, you know, people can count on those. And every once in a while, you know, we all know things happen and come up, but for the most part, you know, those schedules are set. But things always, there's always change.
All right, well, thanks, thanks a lot, guys. I know that's, you know, that was a piece that had been talked about, and it's awesome that it's happening.
It's all Emily.
Thank you, Emily. That leads us to committee or subcommittee and liaison updates. Speaking of push notifications, I'm just going to put it out there. I may need to ask to change the subcommittee for the policy date that we, like, the day of the week that we go on. I've tweaked hours at work a little bit, and so it would be great if, if we could do that. But obviously, we'll work offline in a public meeting, saying that might change.
Still change notification coming on. I have a subcommittee liaison update, if that's all right. Just a notice from the CPAC. So Merrill Shell, the CPAC co-chair, wanted me to let everybody know that the committee and the community are invited to their conference event next Tuesday, April 6th at 7:00 PM. Marblehead CPAC board member and Boston University professor, Dr. Scott Solberg, will be speaking on developing future readiness skills in answering questions about your child's career plans after high school. Dr. Solberg's research has focused on effective career development programs for students with high needs, especially those with disabilities. The Zoom link is out on the CPAC website, and I believe there's going to be Facebook promotion as well. But for the committee, if you can attend, or if anyone in the community, please do join.
Megan, do they have a date yet for whatever they're doing for Unsung Heroes? I know it will be different than it typically is, but do you have a date on that yet?
I do not have a date, but I can certainly reach out tomorrow. I know they've been working on it. I don't know if they've solidified a date, but I can find out. And at our next meeting, I'll make sure we update everybody.
It's a beautiful event, so I want to plug it in. I know a lot of other people will want to plug it in, too.
I always say it's the feel-good event of the year.
Definitely is. And, you know, I'll just give another shout out for Dr. Solberg. He's been an invaluable resource on the reopening committee, as well as doing a lot of work on the SEL committees that have been going on, I think particularly at the high school level. So, you know, he's a, he's a, he's a Marblehead local, has kids in the system. And so he's just, we're, it's an amazing piece that we have somebody as highly educated and intelligent as he is. So that'll be a great event.
Yeah, absolutely.
Through the chair.
Absolutely.
I have asked Scott to come and give a presentation to school committee just because of the depth and breadth of work that he has done on reopening and SEL, because I think there is a lot of stuff that is happening that people don't know, or resources that are available, or assessments that have been done and data gathered. And so I think it'll be very insightful. I wanted to get through the budget process, but we're going to get Scott, our Dr. Solberg, on a future agenda.
I think that's awesome. Thank you, John.
Wonderful.
And then I've been working out dates with Michelle. She's always kind of, we can't, like, we can't have a facilities meeting without her, because she's coordinating those pieces. So I've been working out some dates with her, and we believe that the final assessment should be in the beginning of next week, which is excellent. And then we're going to, we're going to, I'm sending out probably tomorrow, if not on Monday, to the group, just kind of checking, because we knew we were going to have this next meeting off-cycle, so we could get it in as soon as possible, to check their dates. And so we can give everybody a day or two to digest, you know, this document before we, we expect everyone to come and be able to, you know, discuss intelligently. But it's exciting that we're getting that information back, and that's really going to be able to drive a lot of information.
Great. All right, I think that's it, policy. We obviously hit on the policy earlier, so. All right, I think that's it. Policy, we obviously hit on the policy earlier. So, budget?
Done that.
Done that. All right, David, uh, that leads us to the building project update. Do you need to share your screen? You're muted.
Please do.
All right.
You can.
Half of this meeting is a co-host at this point.
With some, uh, I think is, can everybody see this? That good?
Nope, nothing yet.
Nothing yet. So I did, let me just see. Me share screen.
There we go.
Go. And then we go here. Are we good?
Yep.
This, this is a, um, typical classroom that's on the second floor. That's, um, you can start to see some of the painting that's taken place with the colors on the walls. And, uh, the windows, that, windows that are in place. And in addition, um, starting later next week, the ceilings will be in place. You can see the structure. And then there's some of the radiant heating that comes along the, um, if you see my cursor up along the upper edge of the windows, there's radiant heating that comes down and, and washes over the windows. Next photo is, um, a look at the extended learning spaces that we're real excited about. And you'll start to see this develop more and with the lockers. But what you can see here is the, uh, panel that's in place where you'll have the, the touchscreen. And below that, where you see some of the insulation is, um, where there'll be lockers. But, um, you can see the doorways that go into the classrooms and the sheet rock work that's done. And, and the painting and all the different colors that they're already starting to paint. So this blue is, is the color of what it's going to look like. And, um, you know, that, that's really exciting for the extended learning spaces. Uh, this next look gives you, if you were sitting in the cafeteria, this is looking, um, from the cafeteria toward the stage. And so as they start to progress and finish up the, uh, stage work, and there's a little, the white barrier that you see is on the other side, which is a photo coming up that is the gym, they're just progressing to, um, finish up the work on the stage that, or, or the, um, cafeteria, if you will, where, um, there's this total pass-through. So where if you're in the cafeteria, you can see the stage, or you can open up and you can also see it from the, from the gymnasium. Nothing dramatic here, but this is the nurse's office. Not sure who the nurse will be, but, um, this is a view of the actual nurse's office at the new school, and the sheet rock is up and coming together. Um, the next one is, um, Monday night, the contractors, believe it or not, stayed till eleven o'clock at night to do the painting, um, in the gymnasium. So what you're looking at is the gymnasium ceiling and in order to, um, you know, contractors to not be on top of each other, they had the painters come in at three o'clock in the afternoon, and they started to do the paintwork. And you could see how it's progressing along the ceiling with, with the white and the, and the paintwork. You can see the, um, you know, the, uh, skylights that are in, in the gymnasium. And in the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see along where the windows are, the translucent panels will come in. And it's, it's amazing how bright this space is just with the amount of windows that we have now. But when the translucent panels come in and with the, the white paint, it just really, uh, brightens up the space. And it's really starting to come together. So that's exciting. I really like this photo. These, these are the doors that just kind of progress through classroom to classroom to classroom. Um, as the committee knows, this was a decision that the teachers really wanted, um, to have connecting doors between classrooms for flexibility and from a safety and security standpoint. Um, it allows additional egress from classrooms to have these doorways up along the windows. But you can start to see how it's coming together. The, the door frames are painted. Um, you can see another room with, with a blue wall has the painting and, um, starting to really look like classrooms. Love this picture. This is the, uh, uh, this is the Emily Lighthouse right here. Um, you can start to see it's, it's really finished. I think next week, the, uh, top of the skylights will come out and they'll start to place, um, the skylights that will, um, allow the light to come down into the lighthouse area. You can see the sheet rock on the walls. And in that area where the sheet rock is, there'll be another set of stair, that'll be the staircase that leads up to the second floor. And so they've been holding off on doing that work until all of the, the completed sheet rocking is done. And the one, um, window or opening that you see there is into the, uh, the media center that will, um, allow additional light and you'll be able to look down into the, excuse me, the entryway. Um, this one might not be so exciting, but it is from a mechanical standpoint. This is the first rooftop unit that was hoisted up on the building, um, yesterday. Uh, as you can see, also, that's where the mosaic, the gray area is where the mosaic will go. So the rooftop units started to arrive and we had a couple of challenges with the wind on Monday. So they delayed some of this crane work. And, um, so the rooftop units are starting to go on. And then with some of the rain that came today, uh, the final, some of the final rooftop units will go up and skylight work will take place tomorrow, um, if the weather cooperates. And so that's, that's really exciting. And that's a big, um, milestone for the project. Because once these units are in, they'll start to be wired and, uh, plumbed in to all of the fixtures that are in the building. And then, uh, last but not least, I wanted to show this picture. This is hot off the presses from today. Uh, Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary School. This is from Jean. And, um, the, um, as you can see, at the entryway, there'll be another area that will say, that will have the name of the school, but here's where the official name will be on the school. So, you know, this is Jean's, um, you know, he's chosen this, this type of, uh, script and design that is consistent with the school. And I'm really excited about it. I, you know, it matches the, the color of the window frames. And I think it's just, uh, it's just going to really be a good piece of the school to have that right there when you pull in. And that's how it's going to be, uh, laid out when people come to the school. So there it is.
It's fantastic. I was watching them from my office window today, do some of that rooftop work on the systems up there. And I felt really awful because it was that spattery rain and blustery and my, my worst type of weather. So I was very impressed that they were up there working.
Yeah.
There's always so much progress, uh, every other week when you're reporting to us, David. So it's awesome. And yeah, I can't wait for our walkthrough.
Yeah.
Yeah. To that, to that point, um, I'll, I'm going to work on setting up, um, tours. That will be, as I mentioned, um, typically when construction ends is three o'clock or three thirty. So I'll be setting up a couple of flexible dates for groups in the next couple of weeks where we can get people in. And we'll continue to do that, not just in the next, uh, couple of weeks, but I'll set something up with, um, Left Field and Trip from Gilbane, so that we can get people, um, onto the property in the next couple of weeks for some site visits, for sure. But it's, it's really exciting. It's coming together. And, um, you know, Katie Martin's been actively involved in the, in the landscape piece. And I want to thank Dr. Bucky, uh, Nan Murphy, and all of the teachers. We have landed the furniture and equipment, uh, piece of the school. There was some, uh, presentation that was made at our building committee a couple of, uh, for last week. And those purchase orders are moving forward. Lot of work went into that. A lot of work to decide tables, desks, cubicles, you name it. And, um, the purchase orders are being submitted there. David Sandin, uh, confirmed that, uh, yesterday with an email. And so that's really exciting that we're able to get that done. So thanks for everybody who was involved with that.
Wonderful. Exciting updates. Thanks, David. All right, um, that moves us on to new business. Um, I don't think we have any new business. Sarah, do you have something?
Um, can we put on one of our upcoming agendas sooner rather than later? What, um, just an update on our program on our eighteen to twenty-two year olds. Um, we, I know when we moved out of, you know, the Bell School and kind of took over Evelyn, we moved that demographic. Um, and I believe they're currently at Vets, um, which was, which we, none of us, none of us are planning for that to be their final destination. Um, so I'm just wondering if we have an update on kind of what's going on with that program and what, what their destination is? If it's been identified and what plans are, are in the works. Um, this is very exciting for that program. And I just wanted to highlight a little bit about where, where we're moving for them. And, um, both, you know, physically and, and metaphorically, where we're, where we're going with that program. So if we can get an update, that would be great.
Sure. Yep. John was writing that down. I'm sure he can talk to Eric about that. All right, um, that leads us on to public comment. Uh, if anybody has any additional public comment to make, raise your hand. Uh, Scott Solberg, go ahead. You're muted. Hold on, Scott, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Still trying to figure it out.
Yep. I can go to Cindy and then, uh, and then if you work on your audio piece. Oh, you're, are you good now?
Um.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Yes.
All right.
My, my system is totally crashed, so I'm not going to be able to show video.
Oh.
Scott Solberg, um, Ramsey Road. Oh, there I go. Now it's coming up. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, Megan was talking about the, the reopening committee, and I've had the privilege as a parent, serving on that role with, for the CPAC, as well as a parent. Um, and I have to say, this, yet this morning's session was so amazing. There's giddiness going on about Monday. And you're hearing it from the principals, you're hearing it from everyone. And I hope there's a lot of Youtubes and a lot of just Facebook posts of just the celebration that's going to happen on Monday, because this, it's amazing how much work our community's put together. I mean, I got to hear, you know, our, our Dan Bauer talk about the high school and the music and the this. I mean, there are, there's so much going into Monday. Let's celebrate as a town and make it, make it happen. I also want to say, thank you, Michelle Cresta. You bring my, my heart rate down every time you talk. Um, it's just, I, I just come away from these meetings saying, thank you. I'm just, for the last few years, I've never known where we are on the budget. And whether it's good or bad, the way you talk about it and putting it together, I feel so good about where we are as a community. So I just want to say, thank you, Michelle. You don't get enough kudos. I just want to put it out there. And also, thank you all for the SEL stuff that we're going to do. And honestly, I'm going to step away and I'm going to certainly want to present, but it's going to be our students. I'm hoping to have our high school students talk about this. They are doing some great work. Uh, Gina Hart has been working with them, and I've been in the background kind of facilitating, but they're about to do something really extraordinary. And I'm hoping they're going to lead the conversation with our community about what we need to do for our students. So get away from our, just adults doing it. Let our students lead this SEL conversation. So thank you so much and, uh, looking forward as we go forward.
Yeah, I can't wait for that, Scott. Thank you.
Yeah, that's really exciting. And I'm excited to hear about the students. And I think, Scott, you know, both of us in the mental health field, we're going to just push as many kids into the mental health field because there's going to be so many needs as we go forward. So, thank you, Scott. Uh, Cindy Tower Lowen. You with us, Cindy?
I am. I'm just trying to, sorry.
Don't worry.
Okay, I'll even put my video on now. Um, so I want to thank everybody tonight because I know, sitting at the school committee meetings for over a number of years, and especially the last few years, um, there was a lot of pain. And I just appreciate everything that you guys are doing. I know it's not easy, and I know it's, um, sometimes very thankless. Um, but I, for one, appreciate it, um, in terms of, you know, in many of the roles that I've played regarding, you know, parents, stakeholder, part of the Marblehead Racial Justice Team, CPAC, I could go on, but I'm not going to. Um, but I do want to acknowledge everyone and their hard work. And I am so pleased to know that the school committee is also taking on, as well as John, um, in the school district, taking on, um, you know, working with the curriculum and racial justice. And, um, and that piece in terms of the narrative here in Marblehead. So I'm really happy and proud that that's happening finally. So, um, and the last thing is, David, I loved the picture of the school. I love seeing Lucretia and Joseph up there in those lettering and the mosaic. Um, so I don't know if you have a picture of that, that I can, um, get posted on the, uh, Marblehead Racial Justice Team Facebook, but also sharing it. Can I do that yet?
I, I certainly can share the PowerPoint for that.
Okay.
The, um, the mosaic is, I don't know if we have.
The mosaic, I, the mosaic I'm set with, but I'm just talking about the, the actual building.
Yeah.
That I saw that obviously has a mosaic and the name. So it's just really nice to see it. Thank you for having that there tonight.
Yep.
And I appreciate that.
So.
And yeah, I'm so happy I was here tonight.
I'll, I'll send that, I'll send that to you tonight, and you can share that for sure.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Right. Yep.
And that's all I have to say. Good night. And thanks for letting me, um, chat.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, uh, Ms. Liny has her hand back up.
Just one more question. How, is there any motion? Like, am I all set? Or how, how does that work for the funding and whatnot for the, for the items and the flags?
We'll work it through my office.
Yep.
Okay, so it's approved. I don't, I don't need any other approval. Okay, just making sure. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Candace. All right, uh, that leads us to correspondence. Um, I don't have any correspondence to put out this evening. Um, so I will officially adjourn us at nine oh eight P M. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you.